Good afternoon, evening, early evening, everyone. We're gonna call the what's what's today's date? We're gonna call the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to re the whole meeting to order. And we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Point of information. Um, Dr. Nemo? Yes, thank you. I'd like to know why we are not having public comments at the Cow meeting. I thought we were committed to public engagement and giving citizens opportunities to speak to us directly. So can you tell us how this decision, why it was made, and should it not come before the board for discussion?
Actually, Dr. Temple, it is a requirement of policy. So and I had multiple board members over the course of several months asked me to remove public comments, which I resisted. And so we came to a compromise that I would move the meetings back to five fifteen.
I didn't think having the meeting at five fifteen nego negated us having public comments. So I am concerned about us not having public comments because we have so little time where we actually do hear from the public.
Well, I reached out to you over the over the weekend about it, actually, early or late last week. And offered you opportunity to speak to me about it, but you're waiting until now, which is fine. But your objections noted, and you probably have made all of the arguments that I also made in resisting the decision. Anything else?
No, I just want to record that I am concerned and maybe we'll hear from the public. If they are concerned, I think it'll be a good thing for them.
Well, that that was also put out by the district that the public is more than welcome to reach out to us. You know, our contact information is listed on the website, and you know, that may even be a better way. Because then they get us directly and they can say everything that they want to say.
Well, sometimes sometimes citizens want to say something to all of us, and we all need to hear.
And that's what the regular board meetings are for. Yes, ma'am. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Yes, ma'am. All right, motion carries. We will now move on to item two A, the superintendent's report. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gallion.
Good evening. Tonight, you're going to hear an overview of what the first thirty days have been like in the district and how I aligned my listen, learning, and leading tour around the five goals and making sure that I stuck to those areas. So tonight, I'm showing you at a very high level some of the things I've learned in the last thirty days, starting with the needs assessment. The needs assessment of the organization has really been about meeting with each chief and department head that I was able to access. In some cases, most of those department heads were in operations to look at the overall organization and determine how allocations are being resourced out and what the process and procedure is for that. Looking, and we did a deep, deep analysis with the leadership around the ESR analysis, looking at where we could come up with the nineteen point six million dollars to help with the teacher bonuses. We continue to do those on a weekly basis. In fact, we did one today. As it relates to relationships, I have been intentional and we will begin the process of doing one-on-ones with board members. But where I've had the opportunity to meet with board or talk to board members, I have tried to have those individual conversations with board members, trustees. And so we had our first retreat that I thought went over pretty well and walked away with an opportunity to learn more about what our relationship should be like moving forward. And I'm really excited about the opportunity that's going to be before us. I have an open door policy as it relates to board members having access to me. So and board members have some have taken advantage of that and some have not. But in any case, where I had the opportunity to meet or talk to board members, I did that. As it relates to stakeholder engagement, as you can imagine, it's been a very, very busy thirty days. A lot of community activity, but over that time period, I've met with seven community groups, two educational advocate type individuals, ten elected officials, thirteen internal staff members in order to get engagement with them, had four media interactions, and then two state-level official interactions. And so we continue to set those meetings, continuing to build on that momentum, making a lot of opportunities and taking advantage of a lot of opportunities to get out into public spaces and meet people and meet people everywhere I go. I'm having an opportunity to talk to individuals about their hopes and desires of this district, whether it be in these formal settings or be just in passing at the gas station. So it's been an interesting thirty days. As it relates to organizational effectiveness, I really wanted to take the time to do an organizational analysis of the org chart with the intent to to take a step-by-step process. My initial analysis of the org chart was to determine how the organization overall is set up to support schools and that we have appropriate alignment to make sure that when we get schools open on Wednesday, August twenty-third, that we have all the support that they need in 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 line. So we did that in the initial alignment. I'll continue to go through the org chart and the different departments analyzing how much duplication we have, and that'll be ongoing. But the initial analysis of the org chart was just to make sure we're prepared for schools and when schools open. During that opportunity, we also identified some some key areas that that we may want to dig a little deeper in or just have a better understanding about. And that's not to identify any problems, but we have some departments that are running really, really well, and we want to figure out how they're doing it and what they're doing. So I just want to really give a shout out to some of the departments that I had the opportunity to learn from. The nursing services, security facilities, and just really understanding how we provide services to our students through nutrition and just learning all those different things. It's really interesting this to know how much of an asset we have with some of those operational areas. And then as it relates to academic excellence, the absolute priority of this work that we do is around making sure that we're excellent educators. And so what I saw in the district in those thirty days is I had the opportunity to go to the Educators Symposium, met some really sharp leaders and teachers who are really ready and focused to make sure we're ready for schools. I look, I really want to give a shout out to our academic team who did an excellent job of reiterating our three goals and priorities, making sure that the teachers and the leaders understood what we're going to be focusing on in order to continue to meet our goals for the year. And then myself and the various chiefs, weekly, leading into schools, went over school readiness. We really made sure all the areas were covered and that we were ready to open schools. And so we placed a lot of emphasis on that. And through that process, I learned a lot about the organization. So that's my thirty-day summary and my update, and I'll come back in sixty days to give you more information.
All right, we'll now move on to item three, student outcome strategic education. Actually, gonna open and open it up for discussion. I'll start with Dr. Temple.
Thank you so much for the report. I appreciate it, and I especially appreciate the open door policy and the communication that I've seen you engaged in so far. That's really good. I'm wondering, and maybe this will come later about the ESR analysis. I really, I do want to know more about how we're progressing with finding the five thousand dollars for the teacher's bonus, because I know the plan has to be submitted, I think, in just a few days. So maybe maybe during audit and finance, we'll have more information about that. And just, you know, I'm just curious, what do you plan to tackle in the next thirty days?
Oh, it's a lot out there. But really, I'm just gonna, this is where the real opportunity to learn about the organization, to me, is going to come into play, is I get to see it in action, get to see the students, get to see the teachers in action and be able to learn from that process. And I'm looking forward to that. I think that's going to really be a really eye-opening experience for me. And so I'm looking forward to that. And then just continue to engage and be more intentional about how to effectively engage various communities. And so we've come up with some plans and some ideas about how that's going to go about. The team has been really working diligently to make sure I'm meeting with the right constituency groups and the various communities so that we get all of the information that we need. And so I'm looking forward to that.
Ms. Roberson?
And Dr. Gallion, thank you for this report, and I look forward to your forty-five-day report. Just a couple of things, and Dr. Temple touched on it, and I'm not sure if we are going to dive into it once we get to finance, but I am too curious about the nineteen point six million dollars. And are we gonna have that ready for the August fifteenth deadline? So I don't know if we want to discuss that now or in finance.
Well, I would share with you that the team has been working very hard and making sure, and and they're going deeper and deeper into it. So it's, we're making progress, but I think that we'll end up doing it. But we're actually having all the leaders go back to the drawing board and dig a little deeper to be a little bit more clear about how money has been resourced and encumbered already.
Okay, great. I like that where you said leaders, but not principals, because what I don't want is for the principals to have to go and take money away from things that's been programmed already. So I like the fact that we will start at the central office first. And the last thing that if you could touch on with the COVID numbers, it's going up again. Are we getting ready for, you know, anything that could possibly happen once we get our students back into the building? How are we preparing for a possible COVID outbreak?
Well, I didn't really dig into that during the thirty days, but I'm sure Mr. Burry got an answer for us.
Yes, ma'am. If I'm not mistaken, I did put an update a couple of weeks ago in the superintendent's board brief on where we stand with COVID. There is indeed an uptick, but we are following the DHEC exclusion list at this point. We are not doing contact tracing. We'll closely monitor where our cases occur. If we have a twenty percent number in a signal classroom, we'll obviously do the deep dive like we do would do with any other infectious disease. But out outside of that, there is no additional extra work that is being directed by DHEC or any of the agencies. We'll obviously keep closely monitoring it, though, for that very same reason.
Thank you.
Just, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Calhoun isn't with us this evening, so I'll move over to Ms. McKinney.
Again, thank you for the report, individuals. Just a couple of questions. Well, I have lots of questions. I won't ask, but a couple. I ditto my two colleagues about the ESR money. How how much have we currently located that can be delegated to that nineteen point six, Dr. Gallion?
As of this, we met earlier today, and we are around fourteen, fifteen million that we've been able to to identify. And so we're still working through it, because like Ms. Roberson said, we're trying not to impact schools. But we're, you know, we're still working, working through it, and we appreciate your patience. And I think I've led some people to believe there's a deadline for the for the amendment, and there's not. What we were trying to do was we didn't want to, we didn't want to push and have this done before the federal deadline, which is tomorrow. So there's, there's no, there's no deadline to actually file the amendment and request permission for the for the ESR bonus.
Thank you for that. There was confusion on that, I think. Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Gallion, with the, I'm curious about who the seven community groups and the two educational advocates are.
Sure, I have that right here. So the community groups have been groups like the NAACP and the met with the HM group, the actual I'm having them listed here, so I'm trying to read through all of these. So we met with several social fraternity organizations, some of the organizations that support schools, like the Friends of Fire, Frierson, and things like that. And so we've, I'm meeting with the the interdenominational clergy. So we're doing things like, so that's a variety of different, I could go through this whole list, but it's a long list here in front of me.
Right.
So.
All right. Well, thank you. With a notice that we've heard nothing but good things about the Charleston Educator Symposium. What, when will the surveys be back in? And what is your point, will be your point to apply the, what you find from the survey that you asked for?
Oh, the surveys that I'm asking for. So as as that information comes in, what we're doing is processing and categorizing what the feedback is. They haven't been as plentiful as we thought they would be. So as I go out, I continue to reiterate, there's an opportunity there. But the symposium was the first time that they heard about it.
Okay. And then under effectiveness, what what is the financial analysis that's referred to in that bullet?
So here, I'm looking at, so one is, we looked at the ESR funds, and then we continue to look at that. I'm looking at areas where we have spent money and figuring out how that money was spent and why are we spending so much money? And without disclosing all of that right now, I'm just saying that I'm continuing to do those deep dive analysis. Some of them have prompted an opportunity for me to do an audit in some areas and to continue to look at how resources are allocated.
Okay, all right. With the instructional, I have one instructional question. I know that instruction is fresh on our minds because it's about to kick in in the classroom. I'm curious, because there's been so much discussion recently about cursive handwriting, and if it's not taught in schools, children can't read historical documents. Is cursive handwriting taught in Charleston County schools?
I haven't learned about that, so I'm gonna yield to the CAO.
Cursive handwriting is not explicitly taught in our curriculum based on South Carolina standards.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That answers that question. I'll, I'll stop with that.
Okay, move on to Ms. Bailey.
Thank you for your thirty-day report. I actually enjoyed the retreat that we had on Saturday because my motto is teamwork makes the dream work. And thank you for doing your best to bring all of us together to work in unity. And my question was, well, it's not actually a question because you answered my email. I look forward to working with you in upping our community involvement with the different communities in this area, because we have several different nationalities of people that live here in Charleston. And we want them to feel like they're important and that they're engaged and they have a voice. So I appreciate you for that. And one other thing, I just wanted to make sure, because we'll be following this closely, your analysis of the organizational chart, to make sure that the jobs that are at the top are the ones that are deemed necessary and needful and that we are able to not just take people out of those positions, but be able to place them in positions that are needed in the district and that we use those savings to better resources and tools in the in classrooms for the teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
Part of that alignment analysis is to make sure that we're not duplicating. So because we're not, some areas we're not in alignment, I sense that there's some duplication at work.
Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
I don't have anything to add that has hasn't been said before, but thank you so much for the report, and thank you so much for the open door policy. I did also appreciate the retreat this Saturday.
Kelly?
First and foremost, Dr. Gallion, the bow tie looks amazing, phenomenal. Thank you so much, sir, for for the time on Saturday, that that there was quite a few nuggets I was able to take out of that. Specifically, the work in your org chart. I know there's a lot there. I'm doing it myself on the corporate side. So that's a ton of work, so please keep that up. That's a, that's a very important part of making sure that we are spending taxpayer money correctly and getting as many dollars as we possibly can into the into the classrooms. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Brownsey?
Thank you for the report. I'm curious, the two state-level officials, who'd you meet with?
That was state superintendent of education. And then I've met with several state senators and and assembly people, so.
Was that at functions or just you just had meeting? Did you have a meeting with Ms. Weaver?
So I went to the to the delegation meeting that they had.
Oh, right, the York Town.
Yes, yes, sir. So met them there, and I've actually bumped into people in various places. In my community interactions, I've been in the same place with several senators and assembly people.
For a large town, it is a small town. I understand that. And have you been across the river to Mount Pleasant?
Yes, I have.
Visited any of our schools over there?
I was in a school today, but I've visited, what I tried to do the first thirty days is really not, I want the principals and leaders in the schools to focus on getting their schools ready and prepared for students. So I try to stay out of just site visits to allow them to focus on getting their school ready. Because when you have a superintendent or district leadership show up at your building, now you're taking your time away from things that you normally would do and touring the building. So I'm going to be making staff interactions. As the teachers are coming back, we have it on the agenda for to get out and just pop into schools, because it'll be more natural then. And then I, my whole schedule, once school starts, is all site visits. But I was over at Wando today.
And it's, did you get over to the Career Advancement Center?
I seen it. I didn't get in there, but I saw it.
So it's a wonderful thing to look at things that really, really work well. Because I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks with the principals and teachers and community. And any of the community groups over in East Cooper, have you met with any of them?
They, I haven't gotten any invites. We're, we're trying.
Waiting for an invite.
Yeah, most of the, most of the community engagement with groups have been through invitation. And right now, I'm very aware that I haven't been over in the Mount Pleasant area in order to engage with groups, but I'm meeting with some leadership of some groups soon in the areas that hopefully that'll lead to me being able to engage with groups.
And and how much involvement? I see we talk about briefly about the academic, you know, excellence. Obviously, that's a very critical role, and it's been, it's just in nearly every conversation I've had is people looking for guidance from the district as how we're going to be handling these ELA problems. So I'm assuming when you mentioned that you've sent the team members out, that's members of the team, they're briefing you on that. Have you learned anything about that issue?
Now, well, I didn't hear the first part of the question. It was.
About the ELA?
Yes.
Issues and math curriculum issues. I mean, I hear it all over the place. So those are number two. They even come higher up than, you know, actually, you know, classroom, you know, participation. It's like the two big ones are math and literacy, and I just, what have you learned in your first thirty days?
Talked to CAO about her plans for how we're going to address those key issues, the ones that you specifically mentioned. I know that they're looking forward to the engagement that they're going to have at the state level to look at the ELA curriculum and how we're going to address that moving forward. And we had a talk just today actually about what our plans for math and then having someone come in and have them look at that a little deeper.
Someone being?
Right now, we just have vendors that we currently use that we're going to have discussions with to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting.
So that goes back like with your ESR evaluation, trying to figure out what, why, who, what, and what we've gotten. You know, with all these years of using vendors.
So I mentioned on Saturday that we have an organization at this that's doing some deep analysis on some organizational stuff at the state level that we're currently talking about how we can look at some of our internal structures as well.
Yeah, the state level is doing a real deep dive Saturday. It was interesting. I think it's really critical, you know, in in understanding this this budget. And I know in audit and finance, we're going to be going through a lot of the questions that some of my fellow trustees, you know, discussed. Because the ESR accounting and reports goes back to who, what, when, why. God, I wish we had clawbacks, but never seeing any contracts, I really scratch my head sometimes. It's exactly what kind of oversight. But let's, let's go into, so have you met with the auditors yet? Have you gone over to the audit?
Just identified the auditors that we will engage with for the ESR. We just identified and then potentially going to sign an agreement with them.
What about our general auditors that are performing our audit right now? Have you met with them yet?
You mean the Malvin?
Well, that's one group. They did the procurement audit.
I'm not sure.
Is it Finley?
I'm so sorry. Please repeat that question.
Who are, who are our general auditors?
Oh, Greenfinny.
Yeah, Greenfinny, yeah.
I have not talked to them.
And well, we can get on to that. That's what I really had hoped the retreat was going to be this weekend. You know, because I could go on for days talking about your hundred days. I appreciate it's only thirty days. And then it really, it's a fast thirty days. Time flies fast. So I'll be really interested to hear how, you know, the next thirty days go. I mean, because it's, it's a huge district, and there, there are a lot of issues. But the retreat was the retreat. I have no further questions.
I want to thank all of my colleagues for being thorough in their questions, and I echo a lot of the sentiments. I was curious, I mean, I saw a post on Facebook for the district site that you went to church yesterday with a few of the board members, which I thought was interesting and nice. But I've had, since you sent us your report, I've had three or four of the board members comment to me and ask me if you had reached out to me for the one-on-one that you included in your report. They hadn't had you schedule with them, and neither have I.
I haven't had any one-on-ones with any board members.
Maybe I misunderstood that bullet.
Yeah, so we're in the process of scheduling one-on-ones so that I can have those individual meetings. What I was saying is that I've had an open door policy, and wherever opportunities were given, we, I was able to either reach, so if a board member was trying to reach me and needing me to call, I reciprocate, I return the call or whatever the case may be.
Kind of like our discussion about school safety and. Kind of like our discussion about school safety and which I very much appreciated.
That type of interaction. So that's how it's been mostly. I haven't had any one-on-ones.
Okay, I misunderstood. I misunderstood that. I thought that you were indicating that um you had sat down with with each board member one-on-one.
No, ma'am.
I will come to your defense. Your open door policy has been excellent.
Yeah, that's.
Having had two major meetings with you and.
And then um if if there's nothing else, Mr. Barrow, he wanted to. Uh, well, I'm not required to do. Do you want to ask one more question? Yeah, go ahead.
I want to just piggyback on um Mr. Kowalski and the financial analysis. Have you been able to see a detailed breakout of the budget by department in schools? One of the things I'm sure you may have followed us, we've had a very contentious and tedious budget. And we've not been able, at least not me, um to we we approved the budget on high level numbers. And I would love to see a detailed breakout of those numbers. You know, if object code um one one twenty-seven is four hundred and seventy-nine million, what exactly is in that budget code? What does it mean? And I instead of seeing on a two hundred and fifty K sheet, now I see items that actually came from those code, was budget codes, but I didn't see it during the budget process. So have you been able to see a detailed breakout?
I have not um done that type of analysis yet. I am in the process of engaging um to get a financial audit to really dig deep into those type of situations.
Excuse me, Mr. Kowalski, is this something you plan to uh include in your audit and finance report?
It I'm just going to give an overview of what's going to be presented at the board, but you'll learn from what I say, I I think a lot of your question.
Okay, can we hold off? Okay, Mr. Barrow, he wanted to come back to you.
Yes, ma'am. I I stand corrected. I apologize. The information on COVID just came out to you all today. So I'm sure you haven't had a chance to even see it yet. Uh, and one addition to that is that each of the schools has the take-home test available to pass out to families and faculty. So we can keep track and allow them to test to see if anybody is ill.
Thank you. Okay, and so unless the superintendent has any more to add. Okay, we'll move on to item three, student outcomes and strategic education, and I will turn this portion of the meeting over to Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, everyone. First up, we have item three, A annual waiver renewal request. And we will have Ms. Anita.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bailey, thank you. We have Buffy Roberts, who's going to um she's going to overview item A, annual waiver review, and B, the monitoring report for you all. We have a couple of student progress updates we want to share. And then um item C, Angela Rush, will present that information. And then we're going to um toss it over to Ms. Tenny for the academic calendar. So thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Um, good afternoon. Pursuant to Regulation forty-three two sixty-one, the State Board of Education has the authority to waive any regulation that may impede the implementation of an approved district strategic plan or school renewal plan. Waiver requests are approved annually by our local boards and submitted electronically to the State Board of Education. Once approved, waivers are added to the district strategic plan and school renewal plans. So to comply with this request, we have actually provided previously approved waiver requests to the board that need to be resubmitted for the upcoming twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The district humbly requests or asks the board to approve the waivers for submission to this to the South Carolina Department of Education and State Board of Education. The waiver requests that we've provided for your review this school year are as follows. I'll just give you a little um small overview and some examples of how these might be used. I think that might be helpful. None of these requests are new. These are really renewals of what we've previously requested. So the first request allows our high school teachers in grades nine through twelve to teach more than fifteen hundred minutes. This request supports schools being able to offer courses that individual students need, even when we're faced with low enrollment or low demand or teacher vacancies. An example of how this waiver um might be implemented would include providing a teacher the opportunity to teach an additional face-to-face course or a virtual class for additional pay. Um, another example would be to support scheduling at our CASs or our Centers for Advanced Studies that might include a heavier teaching load in a given quarter or semester in exchange for a lighter load um in another quarter or semester. It also allows teachers to serve as supervisors for student internships. So the second request actually allows our high school teachers in grades nine through twelve to teach more than four preps. This request does support our schools in being able to offer more diverse course offerings for students, especially in the area of fine arts. So examples of how this waiver would be implemented would be that a teacher might have only one or two students in an advanced arts class, but they may want to offer other arts courses at the at a different level. Like an AP art teacher might want to offer three different AP art mediums um in their advanced art course, such as drawing, painting, um and three D art. Another example would be a chorus teacher who might want to offer more than one level of a chorus class just to meet the very needs of her students or his students. The third request allows principals or directors to be over two schools or grade spans more than nine through twelve. This this request supports vertical alignment within schools, flexibility in staffing for our middle high schools, and is connected to district and school goals related to school choice and equity. The waiver um is implemented specifically at Baptist Hill Middle High, Military Magnet Academy, and Charleston School of the Arts. So that those principals of the schools are able to oversee both middle and high school grade levels at their respective schools. The fourth request allows for flexibility and length of the instructional day. This request specifically supports such initiatives as virtual learning, distance learning, dual enrollment, and um work-based learning um courses. An example of how the waiver um may be used would be for early bird or um our after-school classes for special programs like marching band or J R T C classes, as well as work-based learning courses so that students can have more flexibility within their schedule so they can take advantage of these diverse offerings. The fifth request is specific only to our online learning programs and allows for the flexibility needed to support requirements for an effective district virtual learning program. This request um does support flexibility needed to schedule synchronous and asynchronous courses, accommodate grade level and development um development level needs of students and proficiency-based learning. An example of how this might be implemented would be that a student would be able to um enroll in and complete an online course that would help them catch up with their grade level peers while also completing courses that they need to continue progressing in their current grade level so that they can transition successfully into the next. And then our last request applies only to our career and technology centers or Centers for Advanced Studies. We implement this waiver to support the flexibility needed to appropriately staff our CAS campuses with personnel. So for instance, because students rotate in and out of these centers during a school day with some students only being at a CAS campus for maybe one class block, administrator, counseling, and teaching staff should reflect the students on that campus at a given time and not be staffed at all times for the total number of students who eventually pass through that center within the duration of an entire school day. This waiver allows our district to look at the maximum number of students on campus at any given time and staff according to this ratio. This ensures that we have appropriate staffing, that we're not over or under allocating for that um center. So that um basically inclu- uh concludes our presentation on the waiver request. Um, how can we help you? Are there any questions that we can answer?
Okay, any any questions or discussions? We will start. Um, I think we started with Ms. Temple first. Let's go down here to Mr. Kowalski.
I appreciate all the examples because I couldn't figure this out at all. So I.
Thank you.
Now I understand. I it just seems odd. Why is the State Department just not? I mean, this seems like pretty logical requests.
They are typical requests. There's nothing really out of the ordinary at all in any of these. And um many of them have actually been in place for a really long time, to be honest. And they actually come in the, most of these come in the template already as things that we can look at for waivers.
The and this one's just out of curiosity. It was the second request um where you were talking about if you had a teacher that only had two students buying, allowing her to combine or offer three or four AP or whatever, expanding that allows her to have more students during the same amount of time. So it's an efficiency argument.
It it truly is. And teachers really want to do that. They want to be able to offer those advanced courses because they want to keep students in their programs. So it's really helpful in that way.
Good, Ms. Kelly.
I just, I real quick, wanted clarification on the first two. Um, I just want to make sure the teacher has the option of teaching more than fifteen hundred hours. They're not that that they're opting in, they're not being directed to do so, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and those are paid hours. They're not volunteering their time for that?
I would. I believe that that is absolutely correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. During my master scheduling time, yes, they're paid. And additional pay, yes. If you're doing an extra virtual course or an extra face-to-face, I'm sorry, for like during their planning block.
Extra duty, extra pay, yes, sir. If 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 teachers are overscheduled, they have the option. And then we also pay them for that time.
Outstanding. Very well. Um, and to the point of number two thirty-four, that was the uh the length of instruction. Is that, if I understood you correctly, that was to length to to make the school day longer so that uh not for everyone, but so that you could do like an early and late blocks that, okay.
That is correct, like an early bird course, um so that students are able to take advantage of something like that because maybe they have a um a job or an internship later on so that they can do that.
Do do we use that similar waiver or would that waiver allow us to shorten days where needed if is that an option at any point?
I wouldn't, I would say no, that that would not be something that you would just across the board, just shorten a a period. This is just allow flexibility for scheduling additional courses for students and and that sort of thing.
Understood. Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
Thank you.
The length of the instructional day, in a lot of cases, we accommodate like we'll get lunch in the day.
Right.
We'll be in the morning, the worst hits are, so hot during the day. And so the or or the U J R P C. It works better for.
Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Roberts, for um, there's a, I don't know if there's a separate timeline for the uh innovation waivers that come through, but what I don't see listed here are the waivers that like North Charleston High School needs to do the work that Mr. Darby is is um doing there. Can you speak to that?
I can. Um, so schools of innovation is a totally different, um, it's a different process. And they're actually, um, they were approved, I think, originally in um twenty twenty-one.
Right.
So they're on a three-year cycle.
Okay, that's why I could, I was actually trying to answer my own question. So I was all in the meetings from last year, like, when did they come? When did they come? So I was like, I know we approved them at some point. Um, that's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. McKinney? Ms. Wanley? Ms. Dama?
This took me back to my master scheduling days.
There you go.
Oh, yes. Um, and I was at North Charleston when they put all of that um new innovation in in place. So no, no questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Temple?
Um, the only question I have is on the second bullet. I'm I'm concerned about the four preps. For high school teachers, it seems like a lot of preps um seems pretty heavy to me.
There is um, there is certainly collaboration in the school leaders and with um teachers in that. Again, an example might would be that art teacher who actually wants to provide that because she wants or he wants or they want to make sure that students have all the opportunities possible for um advancing their studies. So um it actually comes out to be a request more by teachers than administration often.
So are they, do they get an extra stipend because they are um having these preps? Or do they get more um planning time during the day? How are they compensated for the four preps?
Well, one of the things that um, like if a school were to have more than, this is just an example. Some schools are not on four-by-four schedules. Ours are. But you might would have, I can remember having like um actually six preps in a day. Um, sometimes more than that if you have an A B schedule. So it just depends on the situation of the school and um the the teacher's um desire. There's a there's always collaboration that work. And I don't know, Ms. Huggins, I think you want to say something.
Yeah, um Buffy's just right, Dr. Temple. Let's say in a small high school, let's take Baptist Hill, for example, that um has, you know, one one art teacher. She might teach a or he might teach us an art one, an art two, an art three, an art four, and an AP art. And if the classes are sixty minutes, um, that's a, that's a five, five hours worth of instruction and two hours worth of duty or an hour worth of duty in the day and an hour of planning. In situations where we're on four-by-four, such however, um, teachers are compensated if if such requires. And particularly when you have an A B day, um, in smaller schools, it's often necessary if students are going to have access to more rigorous course material or AP honors level courses, teachers are preparing um for or more preps. Uh, English, for example, a teacher may teach English one honors, English one CP. Please don't get me correct in here, but you know, English two, it's still very similar um coursework, but it requires a different prep because of where students come to you ready.
Well, that was the concern I had was about some of the academic courses. I mean, I get from having a CP honors class in whatever subject is, going to CP to honors. It's the rigoriness of the work. It may not necessarily be a different um subject matter, usually the same. It's just the, but I was concerned if somebody was having four different preps that weren't tied to one being smoothie and honors. Man, just concerned about the ac- the academic areas that we don't overload our teachers so that we're diluting what actually is going on in the classroom.
Our principals do try to avoid it as often as possible. Um, Dr. Temple.
Hey, any other questions, concerns? Okay.
Okay, so we have um Ms. Bailey, would you like to make a motion regarding the waivers?
Um, I make a motion to advance to the August twenty-eighth board meeting for consideration to approve the waiver request for submission to the South Carolina Department of Education.
Okay, Ms. Trudy, do you have that motion?
I'll second.
Um, seconded by Mr. Kelly. And the motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, monitoring reports, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, Ms. Roberts, you want to continue?
I'll let um Ms. Dangerfield pull that presentation up.
So we're going to be looking at two um different interim goals tonight, three point one and three point. Both, I'll go back to Mrs. Roberson a couple of meetings ago, have to do with college and career readiness. I told you it was coming up. The first is ninth through twelfth graders who are economically disadvantaged, scoring a C or higher in a college skills readiness course. And the second looks at two groups of students, African-American and Hispanic eleventh graders. Um, if you score a C or higher in six hours of dual credit coursework. So Ms. Roberts is up and ready.
Okay, so we can go to the next slide. Great intro. So we'll start with interim goal three point one. This particular goal, um interim goal does focus on the success of our nine-through-twelfth grade students who are economically disadvantaged in the college and in the college skills readiness course, avid. So when we talk about that, we're talking about the avid elective. In this report, we'll discuss enrollment in the avid elective and the success of our um low socioeconomic status student group in each grade level and overall. So if C C S D's total grades nine through twelve student population, three point one percent are actually enrolled in the avid elective course. This slide that you see here provides an overall picture of the percentage of the total grade level population enrolled in avid from our low and high socioeconomic student groups. You'll see that low SES represented by the dark um blue bars and high SES represented by the lighter blue bars. You'll see that low SES represented by the dark blue bars and high SES represented by the lighter blue bars. As you can see, five point two percent, which represents a larger percentage of our low SES student group, is enrolled in the course as opposed to our high SES. Since Avid is intended or directed to support the success of students who are on the pathway of becoming first-generation college students and may need extra resources and awareness for navigating college entrance and success. This higher percentage of enrollment of low SES is exactly what we would hope to see in the course. In fact, of all Avid elective enrollments, seventy-eight point nine percent are made up of our low SES student group population. So this slide specifically focuses on setting the baseline and target for our interim goal three point one for college and career readiness. So based on our data, four point nine percent of the total CCSD nine through twelve low SES population is enrolling in and successfully completing the Avid elective with a C or higher. With this in mind, the interim goal baseline will be set at four point nine percent in twenty twenty-three with a goal of reaching twelve point five percent by spring of twenty twenty-five. This goal is basically a hundred and fifty-five percent increase or a seven point six percentage point increase from spring of twenty twenty-three to spring of twenty twenty-five. As a part of this interim goal, we'll continue to monitor, monitor how successful Avid elective students are in completing the course with a C or higher. This particular slide shows you how successful both our low SES and high SES students were this past school year. It's important to know that while high SES students enrolled in the Avid elective have a higher success rate, it's a five point three percentage point difference. Our low SES student group has a relatively high success rate as well, at ninety-three point five percent overall in the course. So an excellent success rate. Moreover, low SES students in grade nine have a lower success rate in the course than other grade levels, which can most likely be explained by the challenges of transitioning into high school and then the increased rigor and demands that come with high school credit courses. So it's a way for us to, you know, certainly support students in this transition. So on the screen now, you'll see some of the high-leverage strategies that were implemented this past school year that have contributed to the success of Avid and how we've supported students from both, both of these student groups. We'll continue to provide Avid professional development and coaching support for school-wide implementation of Avid strategies like WICOR, which focuses on writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading within the Avid framework. And this, and with the support of our Avid District Director and CTE Department. We'll also continue to work on offering access or increased access at our currently implementing high schools, which are Burke High School and Early College High School, while also exploring some additional opportunities for possible future expansion to some of our other schools or high schools in the district. So interim goal three point three also focuses on college and career readiness, specifically the enrollment of Black, African-American, Hispanic students, and successful completion of six or more dual enrollment credit hours by the end of their eleventh grade year. While this interim goal also includes the student group's success in advanced placement courses, we're not able to show that information yet due to, you know, of course, the embargo of our AP scores. So our focus today would be exclusively on our dual enrollment. The twenty-two, twenty-three overall status for successful completion of six or more dual enrollment credit hours by the end of eleventh grade was at seven point two percent, which is an increase of one point eight percentage points from the previous year's five point four percent. For our Black, African-American, Hispanic student group, twenty-two, twenty-three status is eight point five percent, which is a point eight percentage point increase from seven point seven percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, and is also above the district's overall average. Currently, seven point seven percent of the student population enrolled in six or more college credit hours by the end of their eleventh grade year in twenty-two, twenty-three. For this past year and historically, dual enrollment has provided less access for college credit than our advanced placement courses do. For instance, for twenty-two, twenty-three, while seven point seven percent of the student population was enrolled in six or more dual enrollment credit hours by the end of their eleventh grade year, twenty-nine point four percent of this same population was actually enrolled in the equivalent number of AP courses. It's also important to note that a higher percentage of our Black, African-American, and two or more racist student groups take dual enrollment courses, while a higher percentage of our Asian, white, two or more races take advanced placement courses. Overall, seven point two percent of all students and eight point five percent of all Black, African-American, Hispanic students earn a C or higher in six or more dual enrollment courses by the end of their eleventh grade year. Overall, the seven point two percent is an increase, again, of one point eight percentage points from the previous year. And our Black, African-American, Hispanic student group, they had an eight point five percent, which again is an eight, a point eight percentage point increase from the previous year. So on the screen, you'll see some of the high-leverage strategies implemented this past school year that have contributed to gains in dual enrollment access and opportunity. And specifically for our Black, African-American, Hispanic student group, particularly impactful strategies include enhanced recruitment of students for advanced coursework through the use of AP potential reports and honors rubrics. The use of the college and career readiness dashboard developed and maintained by our assessment and evaluation team, and the support of our secondary learning community and CTE Department in helping schools work with students to plan college and career readiness pathways. Additionally, extra support for students is provided during the school day and through tutoring opportunities like Lunch and Learn and Paper Tutoring and also Saga. And that concludes our presentation for our monitoring reports. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. Or to try and answer.
We'll start with Ms. Temple. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. I, I have to say I struggled with this report. Though I think I, I now understand what Avid is. So we only have Avid in just two schools. So why is, why just two schools?
Ms. Roberts, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Ms. Denny if she'll come up to answer some questions about Avid, because I have a feeling there's, we need to create some awareness about Avid. What, since we created these goals, I worked with our, our prior board to, to create these goals, Dr. Temple, we have more focus on the expansion of Avid. In fact, one of the only items Mrs. Simmons and I moved forward this year during the budget season as part of our expansion request was from Rich Gordon, who I believe is also in here. Yes, sir. Aren't you so excited? Yes. It was one of the few expansions we approved to move forward to the board for consideration to expand Avid in our schools, particularly in our schools that need it the most. So since Ms. Denny is here, Ms. Denny, could you give a sixty-second? Or maybe two minutes? I'll give you two minutes.
Two minutes.
Quick, high-level overview of Avid for our trustees.
I'm just well, only that we're talking about this, but you're going, we do have Avid in other.
We, we do. We, thank you, Mrs. Roberts. We do have Avid in some of our middle schools, Simmons-Pintney, for example, some of, but this goal is primarily related to college and career readiness for grades nine through twelve. So, Mrs. Denny?
So Avid, for those of you who aren't familiar, I was formerly the principal of Early College High School, which is a school-wide Avid school of implement, side of distinction, rather, I'm sorry. Avid is, is really two things. One, it's a way of teaching. So Avid embeds really highly engaging strategies and trains teachers in that professional development to implement all of the things that Ms. Roberts talked about. And Avid fondly refers to that as WICRA, writing, inquiry, organization, collaboration, and reading. So those strategies are embedded into every single subject area across a nine through twelve school. Then the second thing that Avid becomes is Avid becomes an elective class. So students would attend that elective class. It's either one period or, or a half-period a day, depending upon how the credits work at the high school level. And in that elective class, that elective teacher works with students to support those WICRA skills, writing, inquiry, organization, reading, and collaboration on the student skill side of the work. And so it really, the Avid elective helps students, I think, for, for the early college experience, the biggest benefit to students was in the areas of collaboration and organization. It was so fun to watch students just blossom in that Avid elective course. So that's, that's my sixty-second overview of Avid. Would anybody timing?
Okay, thank you very much for that. So, so in measuring this, this two interim goals, we're using Avid in two schools. So we don't really know what's happening across the district. And then we're doing dual enrollment, and it looks like more kids are in dual enrollment than AP. Okay. And then the other thing I'm wondering about is we have all these other career programs at our special centers. So how are we, you know, how are we measuring the success there? I mean, kids get their cords when they graduate. So, you know, how are we measuring that their career ready? Because I, I guess what I'm seeing is the Avid seems to be helping kids get to college, especially if they're first generation, which I can relate to. And then the dual credit gives them an idea of career or college courses. They may be successful, they may not be, but often it still helps. But then that, so we're talking about two measures for kids going to college, but what about the kids who are just working on their careers? How are we measuring or just seeing that they're being successful?
Dr. Temple, those are really, really great questions. You've got, you've got a lot of them in there, so we're going to try to hit them. Number one, in the goal-setting process, we look to find strategies that are research-based, nationally reviewed, and are locally successful as we determine what we want to do broad scale. This board has talked a lot about, for example, Mr. Grabowski will appreciate this, how are we measuring the effectiveness of S R programs to see what we need to scale as a system? In this goal-setting process, we did just that. We looked at national best practice and research to determine what things we believe help us, particularly with students of poverty at the high school level, get ready, regardless of what they want to do. So Avid helps with both. It helps with college and career. Number two, to determine college and career readiness, there are lots of different ways we can determine whether students are college and career ready. So I'm going to ask Rich Gordon, he knew he was going to be put on the spot because I gave him a little bit of a heads up. I'm going to ask him if he'll come up to the mic. And Rich, will you and Ms. Roberts vary sixty seconds, go through the ways, so that the board of trustees will know? We can gauge students' college and career readiness so that we can answer that part of Dr. Temple's question.
There are several, I don't know. So there are several ways to look at college and career readiness. There are many indicators, including advanced placement, which is a part of this goal too, that we just can't talk about quite yet because of that embargo. The dual enrollment courses that we said, there's also completer status in our CTE pathways, which I know that Mr. Gordon would love to talk about, and he will as well. But there are also certain scores that students can make on an ASFAB assessment or SAT or ACT. So there are lots of ways that you can become college or career-ready, or college and career-ready. We do track all of those things. That's a part of that college and career readiness dashboard that we have. So that schools can see which of those indicators students have already met and which ones they might be able to meet again. And I did also, I did not say when, which is our career readiness assessment. That's another way that they can also become career-ready. So there are tons of indicators there that our students have opportunities for that purpose. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about completer status, because I know he loves that. So I'm going to let him do that.
Good evening, Rich Gordon, Director of CTE Charleston County. Dr. Temple, the concern with the CTE completers and certification as an indicator for career readiness is that the vast majority of our students, when they graduate from high school, that's when they achieve that, that CTE completer status and certification. So it doesn't give us a good leading indicator, looking at the CCR to say, well, by sophomore year, we have so many completers, so we're on track. It's just not a very good indicator to give us progress, longitudinal data to see how well we're doing as a system in preparing our kids to be CCR. So that's why we don't use the CTE completer number in this interim goal, just for this specific purpose. I can tell you though, over the last five or six years, we've almost doubled the number of CTE completers that are career-ready in Charleston County School District. Ever since we instituted the Centers for Advanced Studies, West Ashley and Cooper River, North Charleston, as well as East Cooper, now that we combine with Wando and Lucy Beckham, we're over eleven hundred CTE completers last year, a couple of hundred dual completers, where they completed two CTE programs in one year. So we can use that as our performance measure, like a key performance indicator, as a culmination of our system, but it's not a very good indicator, a leading indicator, to see how well we're progressing towards college and career readiness. That's a very tough indicator to, to track when you think about it, because many of those nine CCR indicators that the state has identified to determine if a kid is college and career readiness, many of them happen in their junior and senior years. So it's very tough for ninth and tenth grade to look at that. So here are two ways that we can do that, looking at Avid, because Avid kind of bakes in those student success skills, the behavior skills that can lead to those CCR indicators. And that's why we don't use CTE completers in a nutshell. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sort of it makes sense, but then it seems to make sense that we need to have more Avid programs going on in the schools. So I think we're, we're missing that part. And we, you know, certainly the CTE completers, we ought to be celebrating the work that those students are doing, because that's honorable work towards careers that give them a good salary. So.
And Dr. Temple, we'll, we'll present that information when we, after the embargo is lifted, and we present the entire picture of college and career readiness increases because we're, we're proud of the progress the district has made. We'll make note to make sure we break all those areas down so you all can see the progress. Again, the Avid piece is just like if we, and we won't go, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but if we think back to goal number two, which has to do with Algebra I, and not only students' success and proficiency in Algebra I, but also a large portion of that goal is increasing access to Algebra I for eighth-grade students that are ready for it. Same, that's like this interim goal is, we're measuring progress along the way, but our goal also, and where we put our money, is increasing access to Avid. So over time, that's our intent, right, Mr. Gordon?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll, I'll pass.
I'm just going to jump in. Dr. Temple and I spent a lot of time this morning unpacking this report. We, we really did. And it was somewhat confusing, and this is my feel. So I think you just hit the nail on the head. I think it's a little bit presumptuous. I think we probably need to wait a little while to get more data in from this embargo score. So I'm willing to wait for that. But since I have the floor, I'm going to ask some questions that maybe Mr. Gordon can answer. And when I was looking at the numbers, it said that in August twenty twenty-one, sixty-seven point seven percent of students in CCSD was college and career-ready. So can you tell me, so I guess this is cohort twenty twenty that just graduated? This is NIGR twenty, ninety, NIGR twenty twenty that just graduated. They came to school in twenty nineteen. So they graduated. So four years. So, yeah, so it's NIGR twenty twenty. They, they came to school August of twenty nineteen, and so they, they, they're, they finished in twenty twenty. So can you tell me what the college and career-ready numbers were for this cohort that just graduated?
I would love to be able to tell you that. Unfortunately, I can't because it's embargoed, but schools know it, and they're able to look at all that information. But schools know it and they're able to look at all that information, but that's something that goes on that report card. So we're not able to share that with the board at this time. But we could break down certain pieces like we did by talk about the enrollment of dual enrollment specifically. But we're not able to give that overall number, unfortunately.
Okay. I think just as a board, we would, for our purposes, we would want to know the current information for this current cohort that just graduated with their college and career readinesses. And I'm not sure why you picked the Avid as the indicator to use because it's only in two schools. So that doesn't give us a good indication of the district. And there's so many, there's so many other indicators that could have been used. So I'll, I'll leave that right there.
Mrs. Robertson, do you, do you mind if I just, so the prior board established these goals and interim goals?
And they picked Avid as the indicator?
So, so the board collaborated with staff. And Avid was one of the interim measures that we use. And these, there are lots of interim measures, and this is just one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then I guess that would lead me to my questions. What are you doing to ensure college and career readiness in schools that don't have Avid?
Dr. Appleshimer. Dr. Appleshimer is our Associate Superintendent for High Schools. I'm gonna let her speak directly to the work we have going on in schools.
And good evening. Thank you, everybody. We're constantly monitoring the group of students and we are, Mr. Gordon went into the schools this year twice. He went in the fall semester and at the beginning before spring semester. And we looked at the data. We have this wonderful thing called Tableau. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, got for us. We, the board got it for us.
Tableau.
Tableau. Tableau, yes. The dashboard. And we constantly look at it. Mr. Gordon and I discuss it. We go out and we talk to the principals individually to make sure they are aware of these students. And we make, we are making that a priority for next year as well.
Just one thing about that with the, what that tool actually allows, allows our schools to do is not just look at the current cohort of kids that are graduating this year, but actually you look at the cohort of kids each one of those years to see where they currently are. So we're constantly looking at that progress and developing pathways for students to be college and we hope career-ready, right?
And a lot of it, Ms. Robertson, has to do with access, access and, and information with guidance counselors, and you know that from your work in schools. Access to more dual enrollment courses, access, making sure students understand what APs are available or what they may be well-suited for, ensuring students are ready for when, offering after-school support for ACT and SAT. So a lot of it is wrapping around students, identifying what students need, providing that to them so that we can see that rate continue to increase in all of our schools.
I only have one second left. The middle schools that have Avid are there in the same feeder pattern as the high schools.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So Baptist Hill Middle, Hot Gap, Simmons Pinkney, Deer Park, and then we started CE Williams Middle South and St. James Hantsey. So, and Morningside as well. Thank you. So we're well represented in the middle schools where we're developing the, that future talent pipeline for when those students matriculate to high school. It gives them that, that extra edge and those student success skills and the behavior skills like study tips, conflict resolution, you know, some of those employability soft skills that we talk about in CTE as well. And we'd like to expand that to more high school students and, and we, we'll work diligently towards that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I'll just, I, I, I'm gonna defer until I'm able to gather all of the information. When do we expect the embargo to be lifted so that we can truly see the big picture?
It's when our report card, our state report card comes out. So our, our school report cards come out in October.
Okay. And then the only other thing that I'm gonna offer at this time is just after the election, I took the opportunity to be, to reach out to the West Ashley CAS where the principal there and Mr. Gordon took me on an excellent tour and I got to actually go into the classrooms and see the, the kids changing classes and what an awesome environment and opportunity they have there. I certainly wish that CCSD had had that when I was coming up through the, the grades. But I just, you know, all the trophies for the technology and robotics and three D printers and just everything they do there is just so excellent. And I'm very proud of it. I think that's probably one of the best uses of that one cent sales tax. So I just commend the work that you're doing there. That's really all I've got for now.
Ms. McKinney. Ms. Waters.
Yes. Couple of things. One, I want to make a statement about Avid and even the lack of presence in all the high schools. Avid is something that we walked around as the former board to schools and saw worked extremely well and gives so many of the soft skills that students need to be successful. And we wanted it to be in all schools. And so the presence of it in two schools, we should norm around the understanding that this is the first year that there's an earnest effort to expand it. So it will be in all schools. And it's not a situation of neglect or that it's intended to only be in a few. We saw that it was working incredibly well, particularly with students who don't come already with those skills and wanted to expand it. And that sort of has to be a process. With that said, one of my requests would be that at the next monitoring update, that we do get a plan for when other school, other high schools will get the programming. And then also just a reporting on how well this is going in the middle schools, because for me, college and career readiness, you know, sort of sharing what's occurring in high school, many students have already missed the opportunity to get it. And so how well it's going in middle school to me is an indication of how well it will go and how many future completers will have. So just paying a bit more attention for the board's visibility to the pipeline is really important to me. And then I had two questions. So the first question is, what is going to be the system for tracking the correlation between Avid participants and enrollment in like the CAS courses or the dual enrollment courses, et cetera? If we want to make sure that, that it's an indicator that it's expanding access?
So I think there are, there's certainly more than one way we could look at that. We could look at student success in getting accepted to college, completing BASTA. There are tons of things that we could, scholarship opportunities. We can also look at the percentage of those students who actually need any of those college and career readiness indicators or those that might need a number of those college and credit, career readiness indicators. So there are lots of ways that we can look at that and share that data with you all.
Well, and I guess more specifically, I'm just wondering, how are you gonna know that Avid was something that led to more enrollment in dual credit opportunities in AP? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question specifically.
That's all right. I didn't phrase it well.
So we can, we definitely can track cohorts of students, students who were actually participating in the Avid course. Because that is an actual course, we have that data over time. And so we're able to see if those students actually went into dual enrollment, which ones of those actually completed six or more hours. Because it's, you know, years at the time that that would occur, because we'd want to start with middle school, we'll look at different cohorts. It may take some time to be able to give you a full picture, if that makes sense.
Yes, I really just mainly wanted to make sure there was a plan that we'll be able to see. And then the, the last thing I'll ask, you in your presentation shared that seven point seven percent or two percent of students were enrolled in Avid. And then that, of that same population, there were like twenty-nine percent enrolled in AP. Are we, it made me wonder, are we targeting the same populations of students? What are we doing about making sure that we're broadening the pool of students who are? Because I would want dual and credit students, the, the population of dual and credit enrollment, enrollment students not to be the same students who would have been eligible for AP courses anyway.
So I think students have opportunities to go either route or a combination of those. And that's often how students actually choose those pathways. Like a student might take one or two AP courses and then also participate in some dual enrollment options. That's actually a good way to do that, to be honest. I think one of the things that we need to make sure that we are doing is ensuring that students have the awareness and that families have the awareness of, of these courses and how you can get into those courses, both of those. I think that's really important. One of the things that we did this year was a part of that AP potential, not just for, you know, getting into an AP course, but also for dual enrollment, having that, having those, the students identified early. You can look at PSA T even in eighth grade, just to look at some of them.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, thank you for adding clarity around the board's intent and, and the Avid. You explained it a lot better than I did. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kim.
Yeah, thank you for the, the, the report. There's clearly value in Avid and it's, it's wonderful to see the outcropping of that. I, I am however disappointed with this, with this goal. This is not directed at you or, or actually in the staff. It's really us as the board. You know, the, the fact that we are focused on one particular subset of race is by definition racism, because we are breaking students out by race. I am so grateful that there are a ton of students that are being, that are being impacted and who are successful in this. However, I would ask our strategic ed liaison to, to bring this goal to the board so we could actually discuss changing this from focus on a particular race and look at it at, as eleventh graders, or I, I love the one that was, that's about students who are underserved economically. But the fact that we are focusing on one race over another is literally by definition racism. And I, I, I don't want to be part of anything having to do with, with that. So with that, I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
I'm scared because if these two ladies struggle with this, you expect me to ask you something intelligently? But going back, I need to understand the dual enrollment. When you say dual enrollment, what are you talking about?
So, so basically a student can receive high school credit and college credit at the same time. And so that, that's what dual enrollment is. We have MOUs or agreements with some of our local colleges so that students can do that, like College of Charleston, Trident Tech. Those are some of the, the opportunities that our, our kids have.
And what exactly is that process? I mean, for them to take a dual enrollment class? I mean, you've got the college instructors coming in or they're going out to the colleges? Or are we just relying on our teachers?
There should be some of both, but there, there are certain criteria students have to meet based on the college entrance requirements for those, those particular courses. But just like you would work with a counselor at a school with any other course request, it's that same process where they work with students and with families to really understand what a student's pathway is, what a student's interest is, and then looking at their, the current courses that they've already taken. Look at some of the opportunities that they might want to also take advantage of.
But I'm trying to understand, are they taking these classes in our classes? Are they going, everything's done on the school?
Some are, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's both. Yes, sir. Sometimes students still take the course online, either in a, a space at the school or there's an instructor that is loaned to the district from the university, the cooperating university, and they take it face to face. It varies.
When was Avid?
Also certified. Dr. Appleshimer suggested that we do have teachers who go through universities credentialing systems that we see this particularly at West Ashley High School where we have the Scholars Academy program. We have teachers who've gone through that credentialing process and are certified to teach those courses. Thank you, Dr. Ebb.
When was Avid elective first offered?
Oh, my goodness. Kathy, Kathy, come up, come up to the mic. Thank you, lady.
That was, was it prior to that? And then the St. John's EEDA grant that they got back in two thousand thirteen? Oh, go ahead. So at least two thousand thirteen is the I was the first district.
So I first interacted with Avid back in twenty oh seven at the former Alice Bernie Middle School, which is now Northwoods.
I'm just in shock because it sounds like when I look at Avid, it's not content-based. It's basically just teaching these kids how to get the most out of a contest-based course.
So just to clarify, to your point about it not being content-based, that's, that's partially true when you're talking about it being skills-based for students. But there is a curriculum that, that's used to implement that Avid elective course for which we award high school credit.
But what's the curriculum based on? Literacy, math?
That WICHER, the WICHER Strategies, writing, inquiry, organization, reading and collaboration. So for example,
I didn't hear math.
So math is usually embedded in the inquiry. But if a student were to attend, say, a dual credit history class and their assignment was to write a, a research paper on, on some topic in, in history that they were studying, what they would then do is take that assignment that's been assigned by a college professor. And during their Avid elective class, with the help of the Avid teacher, they might talk about how to organize writing that paper. So, so what chunk should be done a week from now? What chunk of that paper should be done two weeks from now, three weeks, et cetera? But they also might talk about in the inquiry piece, what are the important research questions to ask while you're doing your study of, of whatever the topic is? And this is really across any subject. I'm using history as an example because I was a history teacher, but it could be applied to any subject. And then, so if you think about collaboration, the next step would be, okay, let's, let's get together with a peer. Can you take a look at their, you know, thesis paragraph? What is your friend's thesis paragraph look like? Or, or maybe more similar to like a college format where students do discussion posts? And so I don't know if I answered your question. I came here to answer the year. My first interaction was in two thousand and seven. But I can talk on and on about Avid in case you can't tell.
But I think the big point is, is that we're only talking two schools. So how many students are currently enrolled in an Avid elective today? Forget percentages, actual numbers. Well, I know you say percentages, but I'm just curious. We're only talking two schools. Burke's not that big. And I, early college is not that big. And you're saying five percent. So I'm assuming we're talking forty, fifty students?
No, actually, for nine through twelve student population, so we looked at the entire student population. So even schools that are not implementing currently, four hundred and seven students out of thirteen hundred and to thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine, so four hundred and seven.
Are taking the Avid elective?
Yes, this past school year. That's only nine through twelve, not our middle schools, this, because of the specific goal.
Out of only those two schools?
If I may, this year was our launching point. So basically, this was the year that we analyzed the data to determine how many students in the district were taking advantage of this, this program, which we all agree, I think, is, is a phenomenal program for students. And so the goal is to increase access to Avid. So this is our launching point. The number that Ms. Ms. Roberts shared should ideally not be the number next year or the year after, or the year after.
It just seems that with the project's been around for two, since two thousand and seven, I mean, what's the financial burden? What is the restriction? What, what's stopping us?
So in terms of a dollar amount, I don't have a dollar amount, but it is, it is very costly to implement Avid.
And so, so Mr. Kowalski, to, I, I've been in all of the audit finance meetings you've led. Again, our, our goal is to, to look at programs, like Ms. Waters said earlier, assess their effectiveness and determine, we, we knew the research suggested it was effective, but to see how we might do that systemically over time with our funds. For example, the budget expansion that Mr. Gordon submitted for Avid next year was several million dollars. It got cut in the expansion request, not by the board, by staff as we looked and prioritized across the system. So I'm not gonna turn around because I'll get an ugly stare from Mr. Gordon, but his several million went down to about five hundred and thirty-four thousand and seventeen dollars because that number may be ingrained in my mind because I hated for it to be cut as much as it was. But it was because there were other priorities in the system that we needed to expand. So again, this goal is about increasing access, like Ms. Waters said, to Avid because we know it works. We see some preliminary data that suggests it works. We see some preliminary data that suggests it works. And just because we had it in two thousand and seven and didn't expand, didn't mean we weren't passionate about it. It just meant we didn't maybe have the resources at the time or the consistent leadership to do that. But our team is committed to that. Our high school principals have been debriefed on it, right, Mr. Gordon? And he is working painstakingly with them. So again, we're very transparent with the board. This was on our monitoring list to bring to you. We wanted to be honest about where we are with Avid and our goal for expansion. And I didn't want to say how much I'd cut his request, but I'm going to very transparently say that it was a a large budget line item. A lot of the funding is for staff to support. Ms. Denny will tell you from her experience at early college that if you don't adequately staff this initiative, it's like any other initiative you staff in K-12. It's not effective. Sorry, Mr. Gordon. For the cuts.
Because my understanding from researching this program is that it's self-supporting. I mean, once you get your teachers in here trained going on, this is not one where we're bringing vendors into teacher program. This is something, this is. Yeah, I'm trying to find why the cost is so prohibitive.
So you do
In the past.
Have what would sort of colloquially be referred to as a membership cost. Um, and then once a year, you do have teachers attend professional development. I have done both professional development on the school campus and that at the Avid Conference. And I'll tell you, the Avid Conference is unparalleled in terms of the experience you receive. It's in my career and I work like to think I work pretty hard every day, but in my career, that the days spent at the Avid Conference were just learning and growing and spending time with what what's referred to as your site team. And I think we we probably would would spend time actively working for ten or twelve hours a day together as a site team.
And I'm just one board member, but this is something I would highly support us spending money on. There are so many other things that I've been presented with that I wouldn't spend a penny on. But this is something definitely, but it should be done at the middle school level. And it should be available, like Mr. Kenny, I mean, Mr. Kelly said, all classes, I mean, all that everybody should be taking advantage of this. So I I think we're going to be working with the budget is is trying to get the departments to prove all these upline expenses in the beginning so that we can start getting these programs that are successful, vetted properly and funded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to continue to look at the data throughout the year. We'll come back to the board and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you're welcome. I just wanted to say, I knew that this sounded familiar because my senior just graduated this year. She came through Northwoods. And because she she started those algebra and the the extra foreign language, she didn't graduate with twenty-four credits. She graduated with over thirty credits. So yes, I I I know this works.
Yes, ma'am. And there's included like a work work-based experiences project, a work-based learning. And so there is a lot of benefit to it. And like again, Ms. Waters said, the the prior board, many of them were in position when the early college was started. They saw the growth of Avid, the positive impact. Ms. Denny had a hundred percent graduation rate at early college before she left. They saw the benefit of Avid. That's why they focused on it as an interim goal. That's why Dr. Williams has started to expand it in some of the middle schools and why we value doing that in the high schools. Again, I regret that it didn't, it was one of the few things, like I stated, that made it through Ms. Simmons and my budget cuts. But it did. So at a reduced rate. So thank you for bringing that up, letting us know your personal experiences.
Yeah, and and that brings me to my question. How at the middle school level do we get the parents involved and so that they can know what is out there? What what, how can we support them in getting their kids through Avid?
Dr. Williams, do you mind commenting on some of your experiences with Avid in in some of your middle schools and how?
Sir, thank you.
Absolutely. Great evening. So like Ms. Roberts said earlier, at the high school level, Avid is one of those things that's considered, talked about when they're meeting with their school counselors. At the middle school level, what they try to do is they adopt the actual strategies that you were referring to, Mr. God, uh, Godbrowski, the Wicker strategies that they have in place, which does include math, like Buffy stated. And so that's more the concept we use at middle school. So it's not whether or not it's an option for kids. It's a school-wide implementation of Avid in the schools. And I'd also like to just add a little piece if that's okay. What we've been looking at on last year, or what we were looking at and we're continuing to look at, and Rich knows what I'm about to speak to. Are we're looking at those work-based learning experiences for all of our kiddos. And we actually started looking at middle school. But we decided after we had a discussion that we wanted to start with elementary school and started looking at first grade, actually. And what that entails is looking at those things that we could do to expose all kids to some type of work-based learning experiences. We do some type of career assessment at every grade level. We try to ensure that they had some type of job shadowing day at every grade level. And that's a work in progress because it's a really large lift. But I think that's something that you all are are asking about in general. How can we ensure that all of our kids, you know, from elementary up to high school, I mean, up to eighth grade are getting those work-based learning experiences? So once they get to high school, they could take advantage of the CAA students and the new credits and all those other things. So. And hopefully, we we can, we can get that tied up in a pretty book for you soon.
Thank you. I think we had one more question.
And 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 yes, thank you. Wasn't so much a question, but a clarification, just or maybe just information for folks to understand why we monitor subgroups. Two, there's two things. One, it's very important to monitor subgroups because when you look at a data that says all students are graduating or career ready at a rate of sixty-seven percent, it's very difficult to make sure you're moving the bottom and that you're using strategies that target the bottom. And so there's a need to actually go to the bottom because whenever you're using effective strategies to move students who are not experiencing success, you are absolutely improving the strategies that will improve, that will improve conditions or success rate for all students. And so it's not actually about racism or even singling out students. But it's about paying attention to the groups that really need to move and historically have not moved. And so just for the benefit of the public, I don't want anyone to feel that the concern is not for all students, but it is to make sure that we absolutely move the students who are failing and not having the success. Because typically, they get lost in the data.
Thank you.
And and not not remuting what's been stated, but I don't, the idea that if we focus on black people, that we're going to get the bottom. I don't like that as a as a premise to operate from. So what I would suggest is for our goal, we could say we want the bottom ten percent performers to be doing X or the bottom whatever percent performers versus calling it by by race. So that that was, I don't.
Sure. And and only just in the spirit of just
Sure.
Because I absolutely hear that. And I don't actually have an issue with that. The one thing that I would say, though, is that we we see different characteristics occurring in subgroups and to make sure that we understand that, you know, black students, Hispanic students, poor students in general who tend to be at the bottom. A lot of times in our system are congregated together in specific schools and there are characteristics and needs that exist in those schools. So I also don't actually agree with what you said, only because I don't know that it wouldn't also work. But I want to make sure we're attuned to the specific needs of subgroups at the same time that we're doing this work. So so thank you for that clarification and certainly interested in he in knowing if that makes a difference or not.
Yeah, thank you. Because this was informational, there's no other discussion. We're going to move on to item three C, Office of Translation and Interpretation Services Overview.
Good evening. My name is Angela Rush and I am the Director of the Office of Translation and Interpretation Services. People call us Otis. So if you hear someone saying, we love Otis, which I know they do in the community and I know they do in our schools, you'll know exactly who they're talking about. They're talking about this team. I have some of my team with me if you want to just wave tonight. And I just want to tell you a little bit about our office. In two thousand and twenty-one, in March of two thousand and twenty-one, our district entered into a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice. And the big overarching idea within this agreement is meaningful communication with families. Now, I heard you tonight hearing things like dual credit, all these terminologies in the educational world. Some people would say education is a different language. And it really is. But if I spoke to you tonight in Arabic, you would hear a message. But that doesn't mean that you gained anything from it that you could use to to, you know, gain more information or to share information. And so when we say meaningful, that means that we ensure that parents understand the information that's being shared with them. And that's why we're very focused on providing translation and interpretation services to support our families. So we have to do monitoring reports and those reports run through my office. I pulled this straight from our settlement agreement with the Department of Justice. We are required to do a compliance report to them twice each year, once on February first and once on July first. And I'll talk a little bit briefly about some of the artifacts that are a part of that. We recently submitted one on July one. I will say that we've been submitting them since March of two thousand and twenty-one. We have been progressing very well with the Department of Justice. We have a good relationship with them. Because I've done this kind of work before. And one thing you have to do is make sure you use people as thought partners. So we use the Department of Justice to help us think about our strategies and what we need to do to meet the needs of families. We recently submitted one on July one. I got some feedback today. They were having some trouble with a couple of links and so forth. So we're cleaning up some of those things. But we'll keep you informed of anything that you need to know about our compliance. It is a three-year agreement. And so we have this entire year will be our third year. So we'll probably be working closely with the Department of Justice this year to see where we are in meeting full compliance. And even when you meet for full compliance, you have six more months of them auditing your services. So we'll still be working with them, but we're very proud of the work that we're doing and we want to share some things with you tonight. So the purpose of this office is to ensure a comprehensive educational experience for all students. So all students can be college and career and life ready. We want to ensure that we have meaningful and timely language access services for parents. And we want to make sure that we create inclusive environments in our schools. So I heard Ms. Huggins saying that word, access, access. I heard Ms. Roberts saying, access, access. This is what this office is about. You talk about Avid, you talk about these programs at the high school level. Every parent deserves to understand what programs are available to their children so they can be successful. I use this quote often in my presentations to staff and so forth. There is no more powerful advocate for a child than a parent armed with information. So we have to make sure that we're giving them that information so they can make informed decisions to help their children be successful. So some of our data right now, and we're still going through the registration process, so we can update this information for you as needed, as requested. But currently, right now, we have about six thousand six hundred and twenty-two students who are multilingual learners. You may have heard it called ESAL before or LEP students. And our state has moved away from that. Multilingual learner has more of an asset-based approach to looking at, if you're learning a language and you know another one, you need to be celebrated. And so now that terminology has changed. So multilingual learners are what we call our students and we call our parents multilingual parents. But we have about a little over sixty-six hundred students who acquired Spanish as their first language. So about seventy, seventy-six percent of our multilingual learners are Spanish speakers. And currently, when we gave our report to the Department of Justice on July one, we have over five thousand parents requesting communication in Spanish. So my office has, my own site staff, they are all Spanish speakers. We also now have someone who speaks Portuguese. Because Portuguese is our second highest language, but we have about a little over two hundred parents there. So you can see the big difference. And our agreement with the Department of Justice is focused on our Spanish services, but we still have to look at serving all families in a in a capacity in some way. But the biggest part of our agreement are our Spanish speakers because we have so many across this district. This information, I just want you to know that it's collected through our diversity and inclusion and access enrollment survey. That's a part of our registration. It's embedded. And so families can request communication in a certain language when they register, but they also have the right to change that at any time. Let's just say that say that a parent goes to a meeting and they start hearing dual credit and all this stuff and they don't know what what's happening. And they say, wait a minute, I said I don't think I need an interpreter, but now I do. We have to legally provide that interpreter. So they can change that information at any time during the school year. A part of our agreement is that we have to focus on ensuring that we have essential information provided to families. And I gave you a list here. I know that you can read through those, but our registration, our enrollment process, report cards, parent teacher conferences, IGP meetings. I heard talk over and over about meeting with counselors. Those are our IGP meetings. We're supposed to have interpreters there to help families who have asked for interpreting and so forth. So we have to translate this information and we have to provide interpretation services to support families. Our language access services, I am proud to say that since this office began in June of two thousand twenty-one, we have provided with the help of schools over eighteen thousand language access services. Now, you might say, how do you know that, Ms. Rush? Well, we have a database that we have to keep all that information in. We have a portal. And we have to share that with the Department of Justice every time. And a part of that is which which people, families are requesting services. How long does it take us to provide those services? All that type of information. If we decline a service for some reason, for example, if someone gives us a document that is not a part of a CCSD document, we don't have rights to translate that. So we may have to decline that service and we have to indicate any reason we do not provide a service to a family. So it's a lot of work. It's a lot of managing, a lot of information and a lot of activities. But there are two things, and I'll do this real quickly. Some people get it confused, translation and interpretation. Translation, that's the written text. Interpretation, that is the oral communication. And my office provides both of those services to schools and families. And there's just a list of different things that may fall into those categories. And to access services, we have a language access portal. We have a multilingual learner liaison in every school that helps make requests for all of the schools, the teachers and so forth. That comes to my office and then we then determine how to best serve families. But also, if a family wants to contact us directly, and they do often, if they go to a school and they feel like a service isn't appropriate or they didn't get an answer that they need, they contact my office and we then help them get their answers and get issues resolved. So they can contact us if there are community members who have a question. We have to say we can't provide services to families outside of CCSD. We get other counties all the time coming to this district office wanting support because they're not finding it in every district like you find it here. But they can contact us to ask questions and so forth. Um, a big part of this office is providing professional development. We were out today at Wando talking to new teachers because many of them don't understand the legal rights of families. So a part of our work is educating people on the rights of families, how to access services. How to work with an interpreter, how to work with getting documents translated, all those different things, how to use certain vocabulary in your newsletters and so forth so that it can be translated appropriately. We work with all different types of groups, administrators, liaisons, data quality clerks, bilingual secretaries, special special educators, bilingual staff, because one thing we have to remember, bilingual does not mean translator or interpreter. And that's where many school districts and many schools get in trouble when you pull your Spanish teacher to be the interpreter and they have no training. And so a part of our work is educating people because when you know better, then you can do better. When you have people supporting you, you can also do better. So I say that we call ourselves Otis. We always say notice Otis because we want to be noticed. We want to be noticed for what we do for families and what we do for schools. So with that being said, the last slide just shows you a variety of different resources that we provide to schools, not only just human interpreters and translators, but we do also provide on-demand twenty-four-hour interpreting services for lots of different languages. Every school has a code that they can use. We have an app where teachers can do some general interactions with families. It it translates back and forth with parents. So we try to provide a variety of resources to help schools do right by families. So do you have any questions for me?
We can start with with Kowalski.
So given the number six thousand, what was it when you first started, first year?
Um, it's been growing tremendously here in this district. I want to say it was about five thousand students when I first started. And around the families, we've been growing since it was a little bit, maybe around five thousand when I started. So this is the second year for, I mean, the third year. We've done two full years. This is our third year. So we are growing. I think that's a a lot of growth.
Is it, and the funding for this, is this just out of our general operating fund or is this?
Due to it being a Department of Justice order, more or less, we baked this entire department. Due to it being a Department of Justice order, more or less, we baked this entire department into, into GOF because it's a necessity for us.
And I'm just trying, this seems to be set up mainly so that parents know what's going on, the empowered parent.
It's, it's a little bit of all of that, empowering parents, empowering teachers and educators to know how to work together and partner together.
But when I get a group of kids that come into a school that definitely don't have a lick of English, and are, were they using your services?
No, my office is about communication with parents. We have another office, the Office of Multilingual Learners and Outreach Office. They work on the instructional side because how you support a non-English speaking student is very different than how you support a parent.
Well, that's why, that's why I mean, when you were saying that a Spanish teacher definitely can't be an interpreter.
Yes.
So, but is that part of, that's, so that's not part of the Otis. This is just solely the parent.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's a great service.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for all the work you do. Clearly are doing wonderful service. Mr. Kebowski stole my question. The only other thing that I, I wanted, was this in, a lot of language in here is, is like we're being forced into it. Although I'm very grateful we're doing it. Was this in response to some kind of lawsuit or something from the DOJ?
Yes, yes. We are in an agreement. It started in March of two thousand and twenty-one. This district is in an agreement with the Department of Justice for language access services to families.
Precise. Thank you.
It's waters.
Just that we've come a mile and a long way and very good work.
Yes, and they worked with you last year. My team loved you.
Actually, I was gonna shout them out, but I was like, I didn't know if they were under you or the other when we did the community meetings. That was actually really helpful. When we were at Stahl High School, there was a parent, just a really quick example. There was a parent who showed up just because her son was actually struggling in math, and they had no clue how to ask for help. And so luckily, Mr. Larson was in the building and he was able to, to deal with it. But just having the presence of the interpreters was so helpful because that's a very stressful moment that is easily solved if we could just communicate about it. So thank you for your work.
Ms. McKinney.
Thank you.
Ms. Wiley.
I appreciate your presentation and I enjoyed it very much. I don't really have anything except, it actually brings back a memory to when I attended Brentwood Middle School. And we had a, a child come in to our class who was from one of the Asian countries and didn't speak any English. But we had, we had a, I think it was Dr. Bob, I think is his name. He was social studies and was a judo master and could communicate with his child. And so I was just curious, you said that like a Spanish-speaking teacher couldn't act as an interpreter, which made me wonder why.
When you're working with a parent, for example, let's just say that someone comes into the front office and they're angry about a situation that happened on their bus with their child. And in order for them to share their feelings, you have to follow a code of ethic or ethics, confidentiality, all these other things. And you have to be trained to do that. So you can be bilingual, but it doesn't mean that you know how to handle a situation like that. And that's a big part of our agreement with the Department of Justice or anything that you learn about interpreting and translating that you have to go through extensive training to do this work. Like this team here, they are always in training in order to do this work and to do it well. You just put yourself up for some situations that could cause more trouble when you don't work with trained individuals.
Right, and I, I can kind of understand that from, in my past life, I worked in law enforcement. And so there's skills that you learn like verbal judo and things like that. So, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Damar.
Yeah, and not only just to follow up what you were saying, it's not just that the teacher's not trained, but you, you will pull teachers out of classes teaching to do, you know, interpretation. So that really solved that problem as well. And I just want to follow up that Charleston County and South Carolina is not the only state. The Department of Justice was going to states around the country, making sure that this, everybody was in compliance. My question to you is, is the Welcome Center at Stahl a part of Otis?
No, ma'am, they're not. That is a standalone program at Stahl High School, and it's not a part of our program.
Okay, do you know anything about it? Is it just for Spanish-speaking students?
No, ma'am, it's for, and there may be someone at high school level would like to talk more about it. But no, it's for newcomers to the United States, and so there are a variety of languages spoken within that program.
Okay.
They work very strategically to follow best practices, but it's not a part of translation interpretation.
Okay. The former CAO stood that program up using ESSER funding. And so we were able to build out Newcomer Center at Stahl with that package and look forward to the results in terms of long-term success. So that could be potentially one of the areas we look at sustaining post ESSER.
That is a wonderful center over there in, in so many ways. When you come into a country, you have folks that, you know, you can identify with, you speak a language, and it's a safe place. And Mr. Larson has done an excellent job. We all visited over there and we're doing, I hope that we are able to sustain that program.
He hires strategically also for bilingual staff, and he makes sure that they get lots of training to do their work and to do it well.
Yeah.
And Ms. Roberson, although Angela's team doesn't support it directly, Dr. Jennifer Baez's multilingual outreach team supports the Newcomer Center at Stahl with services. So thank you for asking that question.
Thank you so much for your report. I'm thinking when I was teaching in Los Angeles and had students with five different languages, I would love to have had your services as well as the work that's going on at the newcomer school. And in fact, that was one of the things I would love to hear about the newcomer school. In fact, I'd just love to visit it. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'd just like to say thank you as well because I'm familiar with your, with your services when I worked at Millen Park Primary. And one of the most important things that people have to understand when you're doing interpretation and translation because we had a lot of families that were from across South America, and all of the dialects are not the same. So you can say one thing in one language, and it could mean something totally different in another. So I just wanted to say thank you for your services, and God bless.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bailey, we can talk later, but as far as strategic ed, we certainly can. I think it might be beneficial for trustees if you're available to visit both the early college high school to see AVID at work and the newcomer center if you hadn't already had a chance to do so. So we'll follow up with you and trustees, Ms. Denny, and I will about some times that you might be available to visit. So thank you again.
Thank you. And any other questions? Anything? Okay, that was also informational. And next up is the three D academic calendar twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, Ms. Finesse Denny.
Good afternoon. Well, I guess good evening at this point. Sheriff McKinney, trustees, Dr. Galian, thank you so much for having me. I'm standing here really proud to be able to offer the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar to our trustees. This presentation kind of sits in a larger presentation where we plan by the end of this school year to be able to offer the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. And so CCSD hopefully by the end of this year will be planned out with our academic calendars to here ahead. Maggie, would you mind advancing the slides to the committee timeline? This process actually began in earnest when we all experienced the community voice in response to the twenty-three, twenty-four survey. At that point, we dug in really deep to try to understand what folks were saying, what folks wanted. And we analyzed every single Facebook comment. We sent out a survey for the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, and that survey received over six thousand responses. Over five thousand of those responses had comments. So obviously, that's a large number of comments to comb through. The communications staff supported the work of separating all of those over five thousand comments into five different categories. So we really had an understanding of what folks wanted, which is what led us to, when we put out the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, call far and wide to all of our parents, all of our employees, community members on social media via email, and ask folks to join a calendar committee. We had fifty-six folks answer that call, and about twenty-one individuals ended up working on the, on the work groups. So you'll see the product of those work groups. We knew that there were some issues that folks really wanted us to hear. One of them was around early release. Another was around the timing of breaks, the length of breaks, the start date of the school year. So we had a really good idea about what folks wanted us to consider when we were developing the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. I think the highlight of the process for me was number two, developing that community survey. The committee developed that survey together very thoughtfully to make sure that the survey garnered the type of information that we needed to develop a calendar that we could feel, feel confident to offer the trustees. Data and decisions were made together. There was no one single district official guiding all of the work. It was truly a really special and really collaborative effort. We sent out four calendars to a group of three hundred and fifty educators, school improvement council members, constituent district school board chairs, and teachers of the year for two consecutive years. And so we felt like that smaller group of three hundred and fifty individuals gave the four calendars the opportunity to go through summer vision. And so we did that just last week, and now we're at step five, which is trustee review. So I'm excited to be here. Before we go on, I want to thank the committee members, some of whom are in the room, who dedicated so much time and energy and effort, especially considering that we started in late May. And so they were working through the summer months to produce these calendars for you. On the next slide, I have a video because nobody wants to hear me talk about the calendars. This is not about that. It really, I think, hopefully the video highlights the work of the committee, and I also need to thank the communications department for putting it together.
I felt like this was a great opportunity to get involved. We've been wanting change for so long that this was a great way to implement change.
I really want teachers to be involved in every decision that we're making in this district, and it was very intriguing to me, and so I wanted to look into it.
We are planning our personal lives a year out. We are, I'm a part of some professional organizations where we're planning a year out. So to have CCSD's dates, to be a part of that family planning, the professional development that happens across the state, I, I think that it, it sets us up at, at the standard where we are planning this far out.
For me, it was about figuring out what folks wanted and needed.
Instruction, building relationships, all those things are affected by days off, the time we have to instruct during the day. I think it's really important that as teachers, we have the time built in for our planning as well because to do best instruction with our students and reach as many students as possible, we have to have adequate planning time. So those, the placement of those early releases, the teacher workdays are crucial.
The academic calendar sets the pace, and a really good calendar can make their school year really effective.
I felt like we had a, a good representation of both staff and community members, especially to have that parent-only voice that they, for them to be a part of this process and to give that feedback so that we can serve them and their families.
So I think I have a better idea of what the teachers need to have it work for them, which really is the ultimate goal, I guess, because we want to make sure the teachers have what they need to teach the students and have everybody be successful.
And I feel like we are moving in a direction where everyone is going to be able to get the most important things to them by working together.
It's nice to see it actually being worked on behind, not behind closed doors. I mean, it's just refreshing.
You do have to think about everyone. It's not just you and your high school situation. So what's unique is I also have elementary school kids in the system as well, so I get to see that perspective from their teachers and also teaching high school in the system as well.
We were tasked with creating a traditional calendar, and so we effectively tried to take in the results of the survey that we sent out and incorporate as many of them as we could into our calendar. We made sure that, for instance, there were, that the calendar ended before June. So we do have some teacher workdays extending into June, but that, that was important to people. And we ensured a five-day break for Thanksgiving and for spring break and have little breaks using half-days and that sort of thing in both October and February.
When we were taking what the public wanted into consideration, we didn't have to just do one thing. So my calendar was to add an extra week of vacation, but in doing so, we could also accomplish finishing the first semester before Christmas, as well as not running too far into June, which was a consideration. So we were able to do multiple things. We are also able, because next year's spring break will fall, Easter falls so late, that when we chose a week to give off, we were able to make it equidistant so that, again, there was no burnout. So they have a break in early March, and then they have a break in late April.
That we were able to be very thoughtful about where we placed the workdays and trying to make sure that teachers had that time. Like I think we typically try to do, have time to develop the report cards that can be reflective and get everything put in place for the next upcoming quarter.
Through starting a little bit earlier, having the school year start for the kids on August fifth, and the teachers starting right at the end of July, which I spoke with a lot of teachers to see if, how they would feel about that. And they were like, hey, if we got two extra breaks during the year, we would totally start at the very end of July for that. We were able to get an extra week in October, an extra week in February, and still get done with the school year. The kid's last day would be the end of May, May thirtieth, and the teachers would just work two days in June.
I have a son who's at Beckham. He's a freshman, and all Christmas long, all I had to hear was how miserable he was that he had to go back for exams. I mean, it, it, it overclouded his entire Christmas break.
I'm seeing that there is absolutely nothing in July or June. I'm seeing two very clean months where we don't have to worry about, all right, what day are we going back, or what day are we reporting?
Starting not at the beginning of the week, starting toward the middle to end. And, and I really think that benefits all teachers, but in particular elementary. To me, just having kids get a little bit of the routine, but it's really tough to go a long week with a five-year-old trying to get the routine down. Breakdown in the middle of the week is bound to happen.
We were spreading out those breaks. I think that that really helps with both families as well as teacher, that we don't feel that burnout, that things are, are, are working, we're staying refreshed.
Ultimately, I think it does help out everybody to be able to get all that stuff done so that teachers aren't having to, you know, report all their grades and stuff after the break, or not having to think about it during the break.
That feedback's already started with my wife and, and her. I took home the version of that, and she marked it up, and she changed a little bit, and I just said, you know, it's, it's a work in progress. You know, it's not a perfect science.
Regardless of what calendar is ultimately chosen by our community, I think every single person has been aligned that this is a process that is worthy of our time and of our dedication.
I am a hundred percent behind whatever calendar the public chooses to, to pick, and that will be our calendar moving forward. I will be happy to be on the committee again next year, and I hope we garner the same sort of results that we did this year with the five thousand answers to a survey, and that every year, this will be a living and breathing project that we can continue to change as the needs of the community change.
It has made me feel somewhat better, yeah, but I guess we'll see how the district takes the calendars.
Continued feedback going up and down, the line is crucial, and I'm. The line is crucial and like you said, I'd love to see it in future CCSD decisions.
I would love to see this as a formula moving forward. We had, you know, parents, like I said, parents, educators, administrators that were, that all were there because we wanted to be there and we believed in something.
A little plug for our website. We have an academic calendar website up. Calendar website has all of the data that was used to develop each of these four calendars. We're presenting today four very different calendars. And so Maggie, if you could click through the presentation, I'm not going to go through this in depth, but I'm just going to let trustees know that each slide is clickable. I'm also going to let the public know that. So calendar one is a traditional calendar. And for the sake of this conversation, we're viewing traditional in terms of the length of each break, that fall break, winter break and spring break. Calendar one's on the next slide and we're going to click right through that slide. Calendar two is a traditional calendar plus one additional week of vacation, of break. And again, that slide is clickable in case the public would like to view that later. Calendar three. Calendar three is probably our most non-traditional option. Calendar three is a traditional calendar and it includes two weeks of vacation in addition to the traditional breaks. And so that was one of the concepts that we heard from the public is that they really wanted to see varied options. And so we feel proud of being able to offer that this year for consideration. Calendar four. Their goal was to ensure that the first semester ends prior to the winter break. In all honesty, trustees, I'm very proud to say that all four calendars and the first semester prior to winter break. And their goal was also to ensure that the year ended in May. And it does. And, and again, that slide is clickable. Also available for your viewing and for the public is a calendar comparison resource. This slide, again, for the public is clickable. You'll see links at the top and we compare each of the various items that, that a member of the public might be curious about or that a trustee might be curious about. I won't go through that in depth. And at this time, I'll open up the floor for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. An excellent job. We'll start with Ms. Carol. Ms. Temple.
Just a question. So these are the four calendars. Now, are the public now people voting on which calendar they like?
So theoretically, if this, this item moves forward to the Board of Trustees meeting, trustees will at that time present the, the options to the public. And then Communications Office will, will publish the survey in September.
I really like your chart comparing all of them. You know, my own view of it, I looked through, what do I like? I think what I liked, one of the things I liked a lot was where the, where there were limited number of early release days. And I think parents will just have to weigh in on whether that's important to them. I liked in calendar three, the two extra weeks of vacation. I thought that was really interesting. You know, you met the goal of, of the students finishing the first semester before. And then I just think like, my favorite, I think, is calendar three. I just wish that there was just one more day for the kids to return at the end of Christmas holiday break. But anyway, excellent job. I think parents will be able to really look at this and, you know, ultimately, I don't have children in school, just grandkids. So knowing when I could take them on vacation would be wonderful for me. Or having them in my life would be great. But ultimately, I think parents and teachers are going to have to make a decision on what works best for their families. And, and it, it seems like, it, it seems like all of these calendars should work well for educators.
It was a team effort.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, this was absolutely wonderful. My husband and I went through this to decide when we wanted to start school. So right now we are down to calendar one and calendar three. So I just have, I don't know if we should ask questions now, but for calendar one, was there a particular, if anyone from that group is here, why did they pick their data conference September 20th, vice everyone else went with November 4th?
So I served on the calendar one committee. I've been trying to keep that under wraps until just now. So the group decided to place the data conferences in September because if you'll notice, there was a break for several breaks actually in November. We also built in a break in October, which was added after the 350 educators provided feedback. And so the group wanted to have a break in September also and use the data conferences to accomplish a quasi-break. I hope my group would be proud of that answer.
Okay. And why the makeup day after the last day of school?
So the data was really very mixed on the makeup days. If you'll look at the presentation slide, it's at the end, I'm sorry, I don't have my slides numbered. But the makeup days were split. We had about 28% of our community preferring to have the three days distributed between the first and second semester. The 36 preferred, 36% preferred that they were planned at the end of the school year and 27.9% preferred that they were planned in each of the three breaks. And so we decided as a group that planning them at the end just made the calendar flow smoother. There is one break in November on the 25th. One, one makeup day, pardon me.
Okay. In calendar three, like Dr. Temple, this was really a winning calendar, but just coming back right after New Year. That's a, it's going to be interesting to see if parents are interested in that. And then again, for me, all of the makeup days are after the last day of school. Anyone from calendar three want to speak to? It's just kind of weird that school is done on the 30th, but they want to make up days on the second, third and fourth. But anyway.
To tell we don't have any hurricanes or snow.
Yeah. And then my, my final thing, but this is great work. Please know that it's great work. My final comment is about the task force group. I would just like to see this continue, but be a little more intentional about diversity in the group. I didn't see any African-American teachers or parents in the group. And I just would like for you to be a little more intentional, intentional about that next time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I just look forward to voting for the consensus that the community puts forward and supporting the community, community's voice. But I want to really say, going back to the last calendar that we approved, I just want to commend Ms. Denny. I think probably not a lot of people are aware because of the things that go on behind the scenes. But with the last calendar, there, you know, between the emails and the phone calls and, and things, social media posts and stuff from parents online and approaching, I approached Ms. Denny after her workday one evening. And I do believe that conversation went on for over two hours about the calendar and, and the outpouring responses from the community across the board throughout the district. And I just have to commend Ms. Denny's dedication and diligence to, to then take the, all of that feedback and then create something like this. I just think it's great and I appreciate the hard work and your dedication. And I think that the community deserves to know that, you know, how much time you spent in to revisiting a situation. So, and then creating something really wonderful out of it. Thank you.
It, it was certainly a team effort and I could not have accomplished it without the group standing behind me. So the thanks, I think, is, goes to them too.
Ms. McKinnon.
Yes. So I like others, we'll certainly go with the consensus, but a few observations and a preference currently for calendar one. As a, my concern about calendar two is having two spring breaks. And when you've got advanced placement high school students and they have to be prepared to take those exams at the beginning of May, that would concern me for my students. The, my concern about calendar three is we've seen with the temperatures this July, I would be concerned for the students, the staff, the teachers, everyone having to deal with these temperatures going to school in July. And I also have a concern in that calendar three with the makeup days being after school. I don't know that you would have any seniors attending. You might not have very many juniors attending. But you get my, my point with that.
Yes, ma'am.
But much work is much appreciated. Thank you.
Ms. Waters.
Yes, just two questions. One, was there any representation of, or, or thought put forth specifically about these extra vacation time? It sounds really great, but a lot of parents actually who are not going on vacation have difficulty getting childcare. And so was, was there any thoughts about that?
So we, we did. The committee talked a lot about what voices might not be represented on the committee and what we could do to plan for that. At the end of the day, however, I think the important piece is that knowing that that might not be the calendar that's selected by the community, knowing that the final survey will go community-wide to all parents, all students, all employees in the district. And then really seeing kind of what calendar rises to the top. I also think it would be important if we are talking about a community shift. When you think about things like camps or, or other outreach efforts, having that advance notice now, if our community were to be able to embrace calendar three, which is the most drastically different calendar, having that advance notice now so that our community partners could engage with enough notice to do so.
I, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm just going to say, because I always do for the record, particularly in my district, parents are not responding to these surveys. They are not engaging with email. I know we do the phone blast. I love that. I know there are text messages, but we have to figure out a way to involve parents like those in District Four. Because what's going to happen is they're, they're not going to do advanced planning because they're not typically used to engaging in this way. They really need footwork. And so if that hasn't been planned for now in this two-week span, I don't see how it would happen. But I just really hate that we keep getting to these points of needing community input and we've still got no ground game mobilized for parents. And so I just would really hate for folks to end up in a situation where children are at home by themselves for the day and parents are concerned, you know, when they could have been in school. And, and I, I too don't know which calendar they'll choose. I'd be interested to see the feedback, but I'm also concerned that a large part of my constituency's voices actually won't be included in that feedback. And then the, the, the second one is just a curiosity around the data conferences. Because since, you know, we're still in the three and four K level, I've never done these. And so I'm just wondering also why there is only one and why there wouldn't be like one in the first semester and then one, you know, sort of top of the second semester. So parents can know what to shift. And, and so that's not to say we need to add that, but just really a curiosity around that.
I don't know that I have the answer to answer your question, but I, as far as I know, it was a request under the previous board. Going back as, as far as five years, see, now I'm going to get Ms. Roberts to chime in about five years ago.
I can offer.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Not at all. I can offer that we have the one formal that's explicitly stated in the calendar. But parent, teacher conferences, parent data conferences, one-on-ones with families happen throughout the year. We want to guarantee that there's at least one formal opportunity to, for parents to sit down with their teachers to learn about the progress of their scholars. But you can be assured that that happens throughout the calendar year. And it has been for the last several years.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Ms. Kelly.
Ms. Denny, once again, you've knocked it out of the park. The Excel sheet you put together is phenomenal. Very nice work to you in the community, or the committees rather. The, the one comment I will offer to, to the board and the public is when we look at these additional vacations, I believe it was kind of alluded to, while that sounds kind of nice, frankly, I would enjoy them myself. Like Ms. Waters said, the, the student, or pardon me, the childcare is certainly a consideration. The other where my mind goes is, is to students who school is breakfast and lunch and without school, there is no breakfast and lunch. So I, I hesitate to be enthusiastic about taking 14 days worth of breakfast and lunch away from those students. I yield back.
Mr. Kobroski.
I mean, I look at calendar option three and I see we're getting closer and closer to year-round school. I'm assuming, Ms. Carlin, that we've looked at all the financial ramifications of adding in all these vacation days and moving it in with the schools and everything. This has been vetted through financial, that there's no difference in the financial implications of each of these calendars?
I honestly cannot answer that on the fly. I'm, I, I need some time to think about that and to look into that with HR and, and. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It would need to say that. Same number of workdays. So from a, from a salaries and benefits piece, no. That would not.
But I'm looking at facilities and I'm looking at Ms. Bowery. I mean, this is, you know, calendar three extending, going back over all over the place. I mean, I, I know how you're, you should, you know, get this out and let the parents know. Go to the football games. I mean, if we're going to start August 1st, that's going to sure effect with the heat and everything on the football. Just go to some of these games and let the parents know what's going on. You know, put a standout. You'll get a lot of people looking because that's where they're going to be over the next couple of weekends.
That is a really, really good question. So I think all four calendars, and Ms. Denny, correct me if I'm wrong, incorporates the state's requirement, the same number of school days for students, the same number of, of, of instructional time. And it would include, we would not pay teachers, of course, for any more days because it's the same instructional time. It's just harshed out differently. I think you're spot on that calendar three from, from a cursory glance does look more like a modified year-round schedule. And we've looked at that in the data around that and how it supports student achievement. So it does give that option that some parents and staff have asked for. So I think as far as budget implications, where, as I am no expert like Mrs. Carlin, again, I think the number of days equals that when we currently serve kids.
And, and I, I agree with Ms. Robertson and Ms. Waters and Mr. Kelly. I mean, I just think it, this is just, needs to be brought out to the whole community. And I don't see the whole community participating in this at this point. Because they are the ones, you know, there are a lot of demographics that are going to be affected radically by adding in vacation days, you know, for childcare. And like Mr. Kelly said, this is the only place. So, you know, I just think we need to really push as a district to get the word out somehow or get some involvement. I don't know what the answer is, but it, it can't be this homogeneous, you know, group that it looked like. But anyway, I mean, I, I, I love that all the work is being done before, all your exams are taken before Christmas. I mean, that, that is critical. But I also agree with the AP issue and, you know, after-school makeup days, please.
So. Will this be sent home to parents?
So yes. What we'll do is a normal, and how we normally distribute the calendar. If the board takes it for information and action, we'll distribute like we always do, which I am very keen to, to Mrs. Waters' suggestion that we do have to find a way to engage with families that don't typically respond. But we'll push it out via all our social, email, all of our media outlets. We'll let the, let all our principals print, push it out at the school level. We'll get feedback from our teachers. And we're just doing it a lot earlier than ever before, thanks to you and your request. And thanks in particular to Ms. Denny and the hard work that she's done. And we'll make a quick comment about the days, makeup days afterwards. We, 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 we. And we'll make a quick comment about the days, makeup days afterwards. We 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 chuckle about that, but just so you remember. We're now afforded post COVID up to five e-learning days. So thankfully. And hopefully, we don't get another Hurricane Hugo or another terrible storm. In the last few years, we've not had to utilize. Um makeup days at all because we've been able to transition to use those e-learning days. So I think. Um it's a conversations with Ms. Denny um that might have been somewhat what the team considered. Uh and thinking about an option that put those at the end because we don't typically have to use it. And I hope that I'm not speaking it into existence, but um keep that in mind too, as you think about how we engage with families and the communities.
And and I do recommend going to the football games and pushing this. I mean, because you're gonna get the parents and and this really, if we're gonna start school. First day of August.
I think that's a point really well taken and and Ms. Waters, Ms. Robertson, Mr. Kelly. You're right. So we we need to do better and and you have my commitment that we absolutely will. Um I also think it's important to let the board know that that any. Any of these calendars can be put forth to the public. You can direct staff at the board meeting. Um for any combination of them, all of them, some of them. Um and so that's why we wanted to put forth a package with four very different calendars for board consideration.
So my suggestion would be this. Um. I have I have a question and a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, being that I've I've worked in Charleston County, especially in the elementary schools, we have um. We start this school year August the twenty third. And the proposed dates for the surveys would be September first through the twenty fifth. So we have meet and greets, we have welcome backs, we have um, we have iPads, we have. Copy machines where when parents come into these meet and greets or welcome backs. Can we not have um these calendars and all this information on the iPads or printed out? And the parents can fill them out at the school during the meet and greet and just fill it out and hand it back. And that that would have a maximum amount of parent participation, especially with our elementary and middle school. Middle schoolers. So and I just wanted to say you did an excellent job on this. Um. I I don't think we could have asked for any better, especially with the links that the public can go to. On the website and find out the background information on how you got what you got. So thank you very much.
Thanks. I need to send uh thanks to our webmaster, Stephen Wyatt, who's gotten all this up invisible and he's just been instrumental. I I don't know how many times I've asked him to tinker with our website for the academic calendar. So he's been very gracious in doing that.
Well, is there any other questions, concerns?
Okay, um so there is a suggested motion on the um. Agenda, however, given the feedback and the very good um. Questions by Mr. Grabowski, I asked, would a board member like to modify? Um or propose a different motion than what has been suggested? Mr. Grabowski.
Let me understand. How many readings do we have to go through with this? I mean, I'm I'm trying to understand the process. We're we're just trying to get the information that we agree. That these are the four that should be sent out to the public set the whole.
Right. So you'll deliberate at this committee meeting and then at the board meeting at the end of August. The board will direct staff to publish a survey for the public to weigh in on these options.
Yeah.
You're you're good with the way it stands?
With this motion.
Okay, Ms. Trudy, do you have the motion available to you? Okay, because it is kind of lengthy. Okay, with that said, the motion on the floor is to advance to the August twenty eight. Twenty twenty three board meeting for consideration to move calendar options one, two, three and four. Forward for public input through a survey on the CCSD website. The public input survey will be opened from September the first twenty twenty three through September the fifteenth twenty twenty three. Direct staff to so to report survey results to the board on September the twenty fifth twenty twenty three. At the regularly called meeting for action and approving the twenty four, twenty five academic calendar. Is there a second?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh motion by Ms. Waters, seconded by Mr. Robowski. And the motion carries. And with that, we will move on to item number four, Audit and Finance Committee Report, and I will hand it over to the wonderful. Mr. Grabowski.
I promise to be brief. So we get going. Um but I do want the board just to understand the highlights of what they should be considering the next two weeks as we do. We have information items coming up and we have action items. Uh the big action items, approval of projects over two hundred and fifty thousand. It's gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of projects. So we're gonna be approving it uh the next meeting. Um big one is the buses, the payouts to the various uh nine charter schools in Meeting Street. That's about eighty five thousand dollars. The buses was twenty four thousand. Uh we have a couple title two, uh we have one title two and a grant funded professional development request. Both of those are fully funded. Uh not part of our general operating fund. There's been a lot of questions for some reason about the school resource officers contract, but that was put out for a competitive bid and. It's just. You know, it went out to bid, so that's just making sure that we have resource officers that the municipalities can't, you know, supply because of manning. Uh problems. Uh on the capital pro program budget reallocation, I'm amazed, only one item. So uh really not much to that. Uh going on to um. So that that's really, we have an executive session on two contractual issues, which Mr. Bowery and his staff will definitely uh will will worry about. Info, info, very interesting presentation will be coming up from Malden Jenkins. I suggest all trustees read their presentation that's been posted. And I this this question came up and I I don't know if staff can ask this, answer this. But it's my understanding that once audit and finance meets with the board doc presentations that are put, we keep that. Up and running so that the board can see those documents. It doesn't come down, right?
No, no, sir. It does not come down.
So good. Also, all these documents I'm talking about are on board docs and you really should read some of them because they're very enlightening and it'll give you. When they do give their presentation, uh I know you're gonna have questions.
Quick question, Mr. Grabowski, sorry to interrupt you. That uh Malden and Jenkins report that you are suggesting that we all read, is that going to be sent to us? Or do we need to go to the Audit and Finance Committee to see it?
It's. Yeah, it's supposed to go on the audit and finance. Uh if you go to the agenda, it's one of the agenda items. It's an exhibit. And why that's important is it deals with the procurement issue that we had. Um but they actually took it a step further. Um they went and worked with staff and they drafted a ninety eight page policy for procurement. And I hopefully will have a new procurement director soon, but you know, that's that's really where you really got to think about it. They, you know, they didn't just do the audit, find out the solution, you know, the problems. They came in, worked with staff on solutions, and then they even took it a step further. And they worked on the whole policy for the department and it's ninety eight pages long. So I just want you to, you know. We we really need to look at that and ask questions. Yes.
I just would like to suggest if it is at all possible. If these documents that are in audit and finance could actually be put like on our committee of the whole agenda. It it's a little awkward to try to go back to the me- meeting and then look at these reports and so on. If they, since they exist, if they could just be on the agenda, I think it would be really helpful.
So Dr. Temple, actually, Ms. McKinney um approached that very same question and then I seconded and. That was the answer that we got, but I I'm in total agreement with you. It would be much easier. But I'm not opposed, but Ms. Carlin.
We can, we can do that. Okay.
Yeah, and it really, it's not a bad idea because there are a lot of items that don't even get. You know, I come out of committee, you know, either for a lot of reasons. So it would be, what I'm talking about is just what's being presented to the board. The committee had a lot of issues that didn't even make the board. So I I think it's a good, good suggestion. Um moving on to info item two, which is a UP uh report on the one sent sales tax capital program. And as I understand it, that's just the final audit confirming how the one said sales tax revenue was spent on targeted capital projects. And as we all well know from all the various reports that we get, that we are fully accountable and has spent every penny and it's. It's just a good report. Uh the math monthly capital projects report, if you want to understand how complicated this district is. All you need to do is look at this twenty four page report and try to understand it. Um just the numbers of the reallocation of funds demonstrates the chess game, the operation department plays and making sure our schools. Are operational, but it's it's very well written if if you can understand it. But I hope you read it. Uh the procurement code seven ten info, this is an interesting one because this uh. It's a special exemption to this, the procurement code. Um and I can go on about procurement code, but you know, the the district had apparently had the policy to enter into all these exemptions. And this one was used on nearly every Esser project out there. So um we really need, the committee is looking at this one. We had a lot of discussion about it. And we're gonna probably make it an action item at the next September meeting, but it's still out there. I really advise you to look at these exemptions. Um so. Uh as to the Esser update, always my fun part. Um I agree, this program needs to be audited. Most of the expenditures, like I said, were done by the seven ten exemption. Or they conveniently fell underneath the fifty thousand dollar procurement on serious bid requirements. Um if you look through the twenty eight pages of expenditures, which is part of the exhibit, that's this wonderful document. It shows you how every ream, you know, expenditure in June, in June was put in. And um you know, there are ten pages of um Bank of America card, P card expenditures. My favorite is eighty eight cents at Foodline. I just can't imagine what they bought at Foodline for eighty eight cents. Um but it is an Escher fund reimbursed expense. Um. There is a lot of professional development and consulting fees again. And I know we approved some of the EL and other expenses regarding the EL curriculum. Those are large amounts um in there. We spent, you know, just some of the weird stuff that you see, twenty three thousand dollars for eleven students tuition at Colorado State. I don't, I, you know, it's an Escher fun thing. I don't know why we didn't send them to College of Charleston. Uh another favorite is seventeen thousand for tutoring with Chuck Town Math LLC. This is just one month. This is in June. So you know, it's hard to say how it Citadel graduate receives large amounts every month. And you know, this year, month, it was sixty three thousand. And USC got reimbursed for a great program that I've heard about, but it was two hundred forty six thousand dollars, which is always a red flag because it's just shy. Of the two hundred fifty for board approval. This is gonna come back in September as an action item. We're gonna have some recommendations to the board, but the committee just felt that you really needed to know that you need to look at some of these documents. And then also look at this other document showing what's been encumbered and not encumbered. And when you go through this, you see other activities and you see an awful lot of money that is still remaining. A lot of it's been encumbered. Um act, address activities to address the unique needs of students and the overall learning loss and learning loss. Those are three line items. And you know, I can't wait to hear, you know, how they explain how the difference between the three. There is an awful lot of money remaining. What's concerns me, and I just noticed it today when I was going through the numbers on the S R two. Isn't S R two have to be spent by September?
Yes, and and it will be.
It will be.
Yes, sir.
So that that money, that that large amount of money that I saw, excellent. I just, it really, it just like set chills down me when I saw it.
So as of June thirtieth, we had, we had about three million dollars left to spend and it's been spent.
Great. Excellent. Good job. We can spend money. Um multi-year financial projection. This is a working, living document and people just have to understand this is like the budget. The budget is an estimate. It's a guess. We don't have, you know, we try to be conservative. It's good to have as we move forward these years through the budget and operation process that we're gonna once again come up with an uh. The committee is gonna come up with a recommendation on an action item on how to handle reporting in budgets. So they were more clear and hopefully we can get rid of this two hundred fifty thousand dollar need. Uh Ms. Carlin's done a great job and can answer the numbers as showing as to the potential financial considerations. The trustees must understand as we make decisions, because we made this wonderful decision to pay the teachers what they need. And I wish we could pay them more, always do. Um but when you look at those financial projections now going out three years and they're only. They're only estimates, you know, we're estimating revenue and we're estimating um expenses. But what we do see is that, you know, in twenty four, twenty five, when we work on that budget, it's it's gonna be tough. Maintaining what we've got now, and that's the big thing to remember, maintaining what we've got now. We'll we'll be going in the hole. Um so it's either gonna be cuts or raising taxes one way or the other. But the good news is they're just estimates and they're based on historical work. So you know. We should not be frightened of this, but we should take it into consideration. So those are the highlights of the meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Moving on to item number five, I'm sorry. Mr. Grabowski, did you want to open it up to discussion?
Ab- absolutely.
Um are you gonna call on the board members? Or are you just gonna refer?
I will. Yeah, Ms. Temple, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, I have it kind of a statement. Um. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollar projects, I think where we're running into a problem here is that. When we had the budget, we saw big numbers, but we didn't know what the i- items were. Now I'm concerned that, you know, we're, we're still looking at numbers and then. We didn't really, we don't really um know what those numbers. Actually mean, and we're trying to provide oversight, but I'm thinking that. We we gotta take a step back as we work in the next budget. And that is that we need to have upfront, knowing that these projects are tied to our strategic plan. It just seems like we shouldn't have to be reviewing them if. When we formulated the budgets, we decided that these were really good projects. And I think we're gonna need to know some things. I mean, because I think tonight we heard about avid and we're like, oh. You know, we cut, that was cut. Well, that was something we really liked. So we're not, we're just looking at. Big numbers without knowing exactly what the item is. So I I hope we can do some kind of reform. On the two hundred and fifty thousand. Because it should be something that is tied to our strategic plan and it's essential. And we shouldn't be debating at this point now about whether it's a good investment or not. Because staff needs to move forward with, you know, what they're doing. So that was one concern. The other concern I I did have about the SROs. Because um I think our community and all of us need to be aware that the municipalities are not providing us with all the. SROs needed for the schools. And so this means the district has to pick up the tab and. And now we're talking about hiring a firm to cover twenty three schools. I I myself, um I understand in my conversations with um Mr. Rowey that the. Our their staff is looking at hiring people, but I I'm concerned about the accountability. We had a situation. That was in the newspaper a week or so ago, and I feel like when the municipalities are involved. They understand who these SROs. I I just have, I'm a bit skeptical about. Hiring a security firm and then, you know, who are their employees and so on. So um that's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Grabowski, do you mind if I speak to her concerns about the SROs?
Sure.
Um Dr. Temple, uh you're probably not aware, but um in regards to that uh news report about the SRO. Being arrested, um I reached out to Dr. Galian, thankfully for his uh open door policy. And during the agenda setting meeting, I brought um a- after our conversation, um I let him know that I wanted to bring it up to the cabinet. And uh Mr. Barrowe was also able to speak to the financial situation. Uh but in light of. Uh, but in light of what happened with that SRO, I took the opportunity to reach out to Chief Gomes at North Charleston Police Department, um, who I used to work with. And so he actually, and we, and, and our, the course of our conversation about school safety and, you know, specifically situations such as that, and, uh, you know, what to better do to solve the problem. Uh, Chief Gomes actually had a very good idea. It's going to, uh, require some work on the state level in terms of provisos and, and things like that to open up the window of opportunity and the district is, I believe, interested and also taking this course of action because it would be too tiered in, in the sense that, uh, we would, um, like North Charleston is committed to continuing the SRO program as it's traditionally run. But, uh, the idea is to allow for retired police officers instead of waiting a year. Uh, that the municipalities could then hire back those retired police officers to just work for nine months. Specifically for the schools as an SRO, the municipality would, um, be responsible of reliability and also in, in the traditional arrangement, the district pays the salaries. The, the municipality picks up the other expenses. And according to Mr. Barrow, it would also save the district $16,000 per SRO as opposed to hiring that private company as, um, we're both concerned about. And share the same concerns.
I like the accountability and also the fact that, you know, just because you're retired doesn't mean that you don't need new training and that your skills need to be.
Right. Exactly. Which is why that's important to not have them sit out for a year. Because you do need to keep your, your training every month actually is, is what the requirement is when you are employed as an officer. So I just want you to know that, that we are working on a solution to that.
And in response to your first question, the committee is looking at working with Ms. Carlin, going back to the old way of doing the budget in which a department would have come in, presented its budget, would have identified all its big expenditures over $55,000. And it would have been reviewed by, you know, the strategic educational plan. And, you know, you would start so much earlier, but that would address your problem. And then it probably would get the, rid of the need for a, looking at the $250,000, you know, level and we would wipe out a whole line on them. But it's only in discussion. So.
You actually answered my question because I said to you last month, Dr. Gallian, that I just don't believe that this 250 K list, this report is the proper way, um, to provide oversight from a board perspective. Um, it, it appears as though we approve the high level numbers in the budget. And then it comes back to us broken down now with the names associated with it. And if we've already approved the money for the particular, um, department, now they're coming back to us and saying, well, can we spend this money? Um, so I just don't think that this is a proper way to provide oversight of procurement. Um, and I, I hope that you all will address this. Um, by the next time we meet and have some type of, um, suggestion to see how we can move forward. Um, because this is not good. And then my second thing, I'm going to go to the SRO situation and I don't want to put Mr. Redenbacher, um, uh, on the spot, but if he can't, can someone, or did you talk about this in your, um, um, identifying this committee meeting? You guys know how I am. Who's the 23 schools? That's gonna, that's affected by this SRO situation.
I, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we just, we, we got all the municipalities and they told us what they could supply. And then there was a, a decision made that we would need additional officers over and above what the municipalities. It's the municipalities that we normally use are just saying they have a managed shortage. They just can't provide us.
Yeah. How are we selecting the schools? Are we throwing all the schools in the pot? Um, and then who's selecting, um, who's going to get a security from Walden's and who's going to get someone from the sheriff department?
Robertson, thank you for the question. A little bit of history to start with, back in 2018, after the school shooting at Parkland, uh, in Parkland. Uh, the district engaged in a comprehensive review of school safety plans as it does after, uh, major school instance like that. The number one issue that rose to the top was getting a school security presence at every school. Our desire in that effort is for this, the law enforcement agencies to provide an SRO. And so starting in 2018, we made a formal request that the, the law enforcement agencies provide an SRO in every school. Unfortunately, because of staffing constraints and other concerns, not every agency has been able to provide that. So the 23 schools where we have security officers are dictated solely by uh, the locations where the police departments have informed us they can assign SROs. So those 23 schools are located in the city of North Charleston and city of Charleston in elementary schools. And that's largely because of various staffing constraints, um, in those particular areas.
So rural schools will not get, they will not get SROs from sheriff departments. They will get their security officers.
No ma'am. So the only place where security officers are being assigned are those 23 elementary schools in the state of Charleston.
It's just the opposite.
North Charleston. Right. Okay. So unincorporated schools, um, covered by the sheriff's office are, are staffed by SROs.
Just to, this is also something that always happens in North Charleston, just because now the conversation is happening. I don't want community members to be alarmed. This is, this is not new in North Charleston, just because of the officer shortage.
It, it's a complex issue, uh, that largely has to do with, uh, with staffing concerns. Um, so North Charleston has been incredibly supportive of the schools, uh, and has always, uh, had presence in the schools, even if it's not full time. They're always checking in on the schools, um, and they have expressed a desire to continue that support and want to staff all of the schools. Just right now, they cannot. So the security officers, if nothing else, is helping us fill that gap that currently exists. We continue to engage with both the city of Charleston, city of North Charleston, um, to try to determine if we can uh, continue to bolster the SRO numbers, uh, to get us closer to having a school resource officer in every, in every school. I will say though, uh, to some doc, uh, Dr. Temple's concerns, um, about, uh, the experience level of the officers is, uh, you know, our, our team primarily comes from law enforcement. Uh, Lee Hargrove, uh, used to supervise the school resource officer unit. Uh, Jennifer Backman in our team, um, was a lieutenant commander with, with one of our agencies. They're responsible for selecting these officers and they're being incredibly selective. We have intentionally set the bar higher, high with the experience level we requiring, um, and they are being, they are prioritizing selectiveness over getting bodies in the schools. Uh, and so it's taken us some time to get all those positions filled.
I, I would like to just throw this out there. Um. The red flag that's being raised for me right now is that all of this is out in the open in the public. And if there's a predator watching, we're identifying what schools and their vulnerabilities right now.
So we're not naming the, the specific schools. I, I take your point. Um, it'd be, unfortunately, the way the contracts are written with the SRO agencies, um, that information can, can be gleaned from there. I will say, um, again, a lot of these SSOs, who we call them, we call them school security officers versus SROs. Um, they come from law enforcement backgrounds. They come from military backgrounds. Um, and they go through the state certification process to be a credential security officer, um, through SLED. So these are trained individuals. Um, they have been going through training. Our local police partners are providing them training. North Charleston has been a great partner in, and providing training to these officers as well and helping them, uh, kind of see what their officers are doing. Um, and so there's a great partnership there. And I would say that this is increasing the security of those schools. It can get us to the point where we have that security presence at all of our schools.
Okay. So.
Your point's taken.
My question is for those 23 schools, will those SROs be full time or will they share schools?
Uh, so these 23 school security officers will be full time at their schools.
Okay. So, but in other areas, some SROs share? Like a high school and the elementary school or another school?
Uh, the school resource officers we have in the contracts now will be assigned to a single campus.
And you see, this brings up a, a fundamental problem. Um. At Audit and Finance, we're getting a very general, we're just looking at the numbers. Is it underneath the budget or nothing? And I really think the board has to start figuring out, uh, you know, way, because I don't even know where this issue falls into the discussion. And, you know, here we bring it up. We pointed out because there's a lot of interest. I knew because the reporters were all over me on this one. So I knew that there was something here and then I hear all the discussions and I'm learning more about it. But it would have just gone straight to the board and if somebody hadn't picked up on it. So the vetting of these issues is very important to Ms. Robertson's, you know, point of view. That's why we need to get it in this budget. And this is what the committee is working on a way that we get the vetting done on these big expenditures so that we have some understanding. Anyway.
Yeah. Just one final question to, um, Mr. Renbacher. Since D 23 is, um, really close to Collington County. Um, would it be possible to enter into a contract with Collington County Sheriff's Department to serve D 23?
Uh, we're going to want to talk to, to Sheriff Graziano to see if that's something she would be interested in doing. Uh, again, right now, um, all of the, the unincorporated schools are filled with, with school resource officers. Um, but if that need ever arose, that would be something that the agency would, would engage in.
Thank you.
Okay. If that is the end of the discussion for that, we'll move on to item five policies. And I will now turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
Sure. So item five A is a, a relatively simple one. It's moving the date of, uh, when teachers are, um, required to get contracts and when those, those contracts get, uh, returned. Uh, and those changes are, um, in line with, uh, the state law, uh, as presented by, um, Mr. Brigman, um, brought this forward. It's, there's really very little here to discuss in my opinion, but it's the extent of the policy.
You wish to open it up to discussion?
I, I, yeah, certainly.
You want to?
Ms. Temple, did you, Dr. Temple, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, just with this professional staff contracts, um. One of the things that is troublesome to, to teachers is that they get these contracts and the contracts don't clearly always give salary information. We understand that because of the budgeting process. But they also don't get site or job information. And I think that we need to really begin to think about that in terms of contracts to retaining teachers. Because most of us, if we take a job outside of the school system, we would never take a job if we didn't know where we were going to be working or how much we were going to get paid or the site that we were going to, you know, the site we were going to be. So the, those, that's a couple of concerns I have about the teacher contracts. I understand the difficulty with, because of the legislature and their budgeting process. And then when we approve a budget, but I, I think we need to make some concerns about being clear, what are these contracts for teachers? And then when they do find out the details, you know, what if they don't like it? And they want to make a, a change that there, that there's not uh, a negative cons- consequence if they break the contract because they're really signing it in good faith. And without some guarantee that they're going back to the grade level or the school or even, you know, others, the positions are going to have.
And Mr. Brigman would probably can, uh, well.
So Dr. Temple, I don't know that I heard this. This is the second part that the contract doesn't have the location.
Yeah, this.
It, it does have the location of the school that they would work. We have to by August the 10th notify all educators the location by law. So the contract contains the location.
Okay.
Now it could change during the, it could change during the summer as you're, you're correct that the budget process does not align with the teacher contract issuance process for the state. So we don't have a, a way to enter a salary on the contract based on the print date. Um, so as soon as the board, um, approves the salary schedule, we certainly publicize that for teachers. So they're aware. But I, I totally agree with you. It's not, um, it, it's really mandated by how the state manages it as well.
And, and my understanding, Mr. Brigman, tell me if I'm incorrect, is that once the salary information is known, the teacher actually has the option to back out of that contract without, without penalty. Isn't that correct?
There's, and, and, and Ms. Palmer may know more about this. There was definitely some state legislation discussion around whether teachers would have 10 days after the salary schedule has been published to resign or, but that was, did not go into effect.
I thought it did. Okay.
But I'll also mention on this policy, um, there, we're also removing the language about the Terry program, if you're familiar with that, as a retirement option. Um, so this is no longer irrelevant.
Okay. So the proposed motion is to move to the August 28, 2023 board meeting for consideration to approve the updated policy with the removal of the Terry participant section and revised deadline dates for certified educator annual contract issuance.
I'll make the motion.
Was there a second? Seconded by Ms. Bailey.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
I, I thought that the teachers had the option to bring to, uh, back out of their contract once the salary schedule was put out. So, so I, I agree with the, the dates, but I'd like to include in our policy that even though the law doesn't require us, I think we ought to give teachers that option. That they have the ability to back out of their contract within 10 days of the salary schedule being approved. It, it, that's, I, I agree with Dr. Temple wholeheartedly. It would be nuts to sign a contract that.
Then that would be a policy change.
Well, it's, it's.
And we'd have to have two readings, right?
Well, it would, so at, at Cal, we can bring forward the, the edit. And then at the board, we can bring forward an edited policy. Um, so I would, I, if, if Mr. Grabowski would accept the friendly amendment to add language similar to the law that did not go into effect. And to bring forward this policy at the, at the board meeting with that language in it.
But do we run into a problem because this policy wasn't posted?
Right.
Publicly posted. I don't think you can.
We, we do not. It, it, this is Cal. We're not voting on it today. So we can, we, this policy is the topic from an agenda standpoint. This policy is what's being discussed. This is a draft. We can change the draft between now and board. That's the point.
That's true. We've done that in the past.
We have. Yeah.
Well, and I don't disagree with, but I think we should check on the legality of what you're.
Ms. Palmer, do you have a line?
They rang into my office that.
Yeah, the, the.
She's the expert in this, but I think that there is a state law forbidden that requires the reporting of any teacher that breaks the contract. I don't know under state law.
It does require support. So I would tell you, um, Mr. Kelly, that we work with teachers who especially up until the middle of June and during the summer. Before we get too close to the start of school, if a teacher needs to transition and we look at the various reasons that a teacher may need to resign. Um, I think if we put the, in the policy, it may not be, um, I think it's something we really need to think through, um, because we really do work with teachers and employees. So if it, so if the salary schedule is published and it's not what I thought I was going to make. Um, I could certainly understand that a teacher may need to resign, but we, as far as I know, do not have many situations like that. Because the salary schedule is usually out in the public, you know, it's, it's like this past year was definitely discussed for months about what we thought we were going to do. And, um, I talked to new teachers today and we did a session on, on the salary compensation group. And, um, most teachers seemed to be quite aware of what was, what was being discussed.
So I'm. So, so to be clear and, and, and if, uh, hmm. I can bring back another amendment to this later.
That's what I was going to say. I think it's better.
But I, I think.
And I'm happy to just, we can discuss it more.
And to be, to be clear, the policy, uh, to, to, to Ms. Palmer's, Palmer's, uh, statement about legality of it. We can write a contract that, that says you have to wear yellow shoes, right? We can, we, you can sign a contract for anything. So we can, we can make the contract say there's a no fault clause. Right. Or like a, a, a no fault separation clause. That's done all the time. The other thing to the, reporting to the Department of Ed. Those come to us. We get those all the, that, well, we, this board has seen those and we decide whether or not to send them to the Department of Ed. So are we violating the law every time we do that? And we both know.
I'm looking at you Ben.
Cause we've been, we, well, this board has been asked, do you want to report this policy violation, this, uh, contract breach to the Department of Ed or not? But you've just said that, that we're legally obligated to. So.
We, we bring forward a breach and and most likely the board will send the breach to the state and let the state decide how they want to handle it.
Tracking, but most likely it's different than legally obligated.
Always the best course of action would be to comply with the law.
Is that? I, I bring all the breaches forward.
To this board.
For them. We bring our reaches forward.
Yeah, we, we sent everyone to the state.
I.
I understand what you're saying.
I think you're, you're. It's like I'm talking in circles.
No, I understand what you're saying. You're saying permissible versus required. Yeah.
So if it's, if it's a legal requirement, it shouldn't come to this board. It should get reported, right? It should, we, we shouldn't come to us and say, should we do this if the law requires us to do that? And perhaps.
Okay, we're splitting hairs?
Yeah, well.
Okay.
I mean, the law is very precise art, is it not?
I just think on the salary piece, because you're talking about that ten day period. I mean, most educators have a pretty clear idea of what the teacher salary is going to be. I mean, I don't think it's a difference of I'm expecting to make sixty thousand, but you offered me thirty. I think it's, you know, you know what you made this current year or the recruitment team uses the current teacher salary schedule when they're recruiting. And they may say we're, we know there's going to be a step. And we assume there's going to be, you know, what's being discussed is the two point five percent COLA. But I, in my twenty or so years, I haven't had. I can think of teachers who sign contracts and were surprised by their salary. If that makes sense, but I'm, I'm more than happy for us to discuss it in more detail.
Should we not have the contract associated with this policy? Maybe that's where we're. I mean, we. We, we, we don't have the contract linked to this policy.
But this is, this policy is just a description of what the contract should have and what time it should be delivered by and accepted by.
Basic structure.
Yeah, it's not an actual template for the contract.
Basic structure.
Okay, well, I will shut up now. I.
But you rescind your request for an amendment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Mr. Brigham and have.
We'll go forward with the motion as made by Mr. Grabowski and seconded by Ms. Bailey and call for the vote. The motion carries. Next.
So item five B paid parental leave, this is another one that's essentially a, a, a legal template. This, the, the language in here comes straight out of the South Carolina Code of Laws. It allows for paid or requires paid parental leave for adoptions and births, both of the. Let me get this language incorrect. Both of the mother and the father, but both, both parenting parties. I don't know the right way to say that. And there's also a good, which I really appreciated, actually, a, a good distinction for folks who are adopting, where you can actually split that leave into two parts if you're planning to adopt more than one child during the twelve month period. So I appreciate that thought process as well.
Okay, so the proposed motion is to move to the August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three board meeting for consideration to approve the new paid parental leave policy that will be embedded into policy GCC GDC leave and absences.
And I so moved.
I so moved.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Temple, seconded by Mr. Kelly. And the motion carries. Five C.
So five C is a little less cut and dry. So this one was brought forward by Ms. Simmons. And it, there's, you can, you can read the language, but the.
Sorry, Dr. Coakley.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doc. It's late. My coffee cup is empty. Okay, Dr. Coakley, I do apologize. Functionally, the way that this policy will impact the district is it would allow for constituent boards to have a hearing officer instead of discipline cases always coming to them. It, it, I'm not a fan of the language in this policy. Mostly because that hearing officer would have, it, it adds another administrative layer to the discipline process where this hearing officer could then be appealed to the constituent board, which then of course gets appealed to us. And so it's, it's just, it, it seems to add an extra layer of administrivia that I do not think is in best support of students getting their issue resolved in the fastest possible way and getting them either back in the classroom or on some kind of alternate path or something else. So I'm, I'm, I'm not a, not a fan of this, this language.
Do you feel that? My concern with this is, and then, and you haven't called on me, so I'm kind of taking.
I'm sorry. That adds some clarification, just to make sure that we actually understand the policy, if possible.
Yeah, I was actually going to offer.
Yes.
Would you please?
So we already have hearing officers in Charleston County School District that conducts the daytime hearings. And then we have constituent board hearings that are designed to do our evening hearings. So changing the policy is actually in alignment to what our neighboring districts are doing and what the state says we are allowed to do as far as aligning with the expulsion. What's happening right now is if our constituent boards are not able to conduct a hearing in a timely manner, as you suggested, then we are out of compliance for the timeline that we should take to conduct hearings, which forces us to either accept those cases as is outside of the timeline or it impacts the appeal process. So right now, when we do our daytime hearings, which is the DOS level hearings, those hearings still can be appealed to the constituent board. So that doesn't change the process. If the constituent board conducts a hearing, then those hearings are then appealed to our board of trustees, which would be you all. So the only change that's actually being proposed on this evening for the expulsion of students J K E is making sure that the language that we use is adhered to for our daytime hearings and our constituent board hearings. For example, if a constituent board asks for a hearing officer to conduct a hearing during the daytime, we have had to deny those requests because we are not allowed to use all of the same options that they use at night. And meaning the expulsion. So we would have to wait for the constituent boards. This has also been vetted through all constituent boards, the constituent board chairs. We have held nine PDP steering committee meetings, over a hundred and seventy-five members participated with over three hundred suggestions across our district. This included teacher committees, student committees, parent committees, along with board chairs, community member representatives and so forth. So definitely it has been vetted through a large number of individuals for how we support. If we don't move this forward, then we stay as is. And when we get the packets in, we are waiting to determine when we can best schedule the constituent board level hearings to meet the needs of what's already scheduled or requesting for a special call meeting. As far as state regulations, the state regulations that state in the state J K E that if the hearing or the constituent board or in our case, we have constituent boards in all other districts, it would just be the board of trustees. But if they delegate the hearing to a hearing officers, then a hearing officer would have all, you know, jurisdiction for the expulsion cases.
Understood.
Hope that clarifies just a little bit.
Thank you so much for the.
You're welcome.
Yes, of course.
Ms. Coakley, I do have a question because you mentioned the PDP.
Yes.
And I apologize if I missed it, but are we going to get a presentation on the updated, the fuller PDP?
So we sent the presentation about a little over a month ago to the board, but I am happy to come back and give a presentation. I'm really excited about the work that the PDP steering committee has done. We've also done it with our teachers. Today was the first time we've had it with teachers on that outcome. We have done it with all constituent boards, the constituent board chairs and vice chairs also received a separate training. And so today made about twelve training sessions that we have provided across the district.
Okay, and I don't know if that's the desire of the full board. And so if it's not, if you have any additional trainings, I'd love to be invited so that it's not extra work or something that the board's not really.
Absolutely. And we can always do a one-on-one.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Training. Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Temple. Dr. Temple was present for one of our sessions and it was very instrumental. And during that time, the policy changes did come up and you will hear that a lot of our constituent board chairs and vice chairs are concerned about not having the support from DOS to conduct those hearings because of the large amount of hearings that we expect to come forth this year based on the PDP changes, which is in support of making sure that we support our scholars, but also our teachers and principals a lot faster than what we've been doing in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sending you an email.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Questions. I struggled with this change as well. So I want to talk about implications.
Yes.
Of the change. So you, you kind of touched on one of my concerns. Did you talk to the constituent boards before making this change? And you said, yes. Were they okay with it?
Absolutely. They're excited. They're actually willing to come out tonight. And what I asked them to is allow us to at least get it through you all so that you could review and give feedback. And if needed, then they would come out and support.
Okay, my next I guess implications, the hearing officer. So one hearing officer would hear the case or would it be a panel of hearing officer? Because the good thing about constituent boards hearing it is that you have, you know, six, seven people with different perspectives and different backgrounds. So my concern would be just one hearing officer with just one perspective. How, what, what kind of implications would that bring?
So I did check in with our neighboring districts as well as districts across the state and they utilize one hearing officer for the hearing. However, I have placed in some safeguards or guardrails, if you would say, that the hearing officer would actually conduct the hearing. It would be recorded just like we normally would record. And for hearings, there are a little bit more contentious and say, we would come back as a team and listen to everything, just like what you guys would do for the appeal. Because we are afforded ten days with making a decision. That decision does not have to be on the spot. Usually for our daytime hearing, it is on the spot because the options are very limited in what we can apply for students in a daytime hearing. When I looked at the history of why we don't utilize all of the options during daytime hearing, I could not find any detailed information to state why. We would not use all of the options that are provided to us by being appointed as hearing officers in the district. So I did look for that rhyme or reason, was not able to locate it. But again, checked into neighboring districts as well as districts across the state to determine how many hearing officers are used. Is it a panel for the decision making and is the appeal process still the same as what we utilize in Charleston County? So it's one hearing officer and the appeal process follows the same, except for they don't have constituent boards. And so.
That's what I was going to say.
Right.
They utilize because they don't have what we have.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so this goal would be when we look at the data on the number of cases we receive a year. So last year alone, we received over eight hundred packets and for expulsion hands, over eight hundred. That doesn't mean eight hundred were conducted. That means eight hundred were submitted. And I'm saying about because we still have cases that are lingering from this last school year because either our scholars were detained or they were in residential treatment facilities. So we still have to conduct those hearings, right? So out of the about the eight hundred that we received, over four hundred went to constituent boards and another half went to DOS daytime hearing. For our constituent board chairs and vice chairs, they gathered at the D four office and they actually outline which infraction should be conducted by a DOS hearing officer and which infraction would be conducted by the constituent boards themselves. And that was the first overhaul since two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. So their impet was taken in. But their main concern was who's going to assist when they are backed up in cases? What, what will we do to make sure that we adhere to the timeline that the state gives us for conducting those hearings? And for some of our cases, we've been very fortunate this last year where we have met the timeline. And if it was appealed all the way up through you all, we were able to keep that decision because we were within that time.
Okay, and I've heard you mention hearing officer. So we are going to use the current hearing offices that we already have contract with. Or is there a cost associated with this that we have to hire additional hearing officers?
So we are actually hiring additional hearing officers, but not as an addition to the, the positions. So we are going to be hiring a certified administrator who will have that training and special ed, who will have the background around school discipline and laws. And then we also are hiring an additional placement coordinator to assist with the hearing. So on staff this upcoming school year, thanks to Ms. Huggins and the team, we'll be adding an additional three individuals, but that's a restructuring of DOS, but no additional costs per se, when we look at how are we going to funnel the system. Once that was separated into the two departments, it left us with a skeletal crew on the side of DOS where I was the only certified administrator. So that meant that we needed to make sure that we were providing those services across to all schools, making sure that the laws and compliance were in place for ensuring that student discipline hearings were being conducted and packets were being reviewed accordingly to compliance. So adding the additional staff members was more of a restructuring of the DOS department.
Okay, in my last third, fourth seconds, is this something similar to what you did before you developed the PDP?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what did you say the qualifications are for the hearing officer?
So one position will be a non-certified position. So that'll be what we typically would use for our hearing officers. It could be anyone around social work, mental health background, a four-year degree. But we are also adding a certified administrator, someone who has assistant principal, principal background, some type of South Carolina certification in school administration. So we can leverage the supports around the hearings, the appeals, the constituent board meetings to make sure that we have enough individuals on staff to provide that support. So when we were DAP, we had four certified administrators on staff. When we separated, we had one and that was me.
And using this process of the hearing officer, do you have data on the number of appeals that are made because the student is and their family have come before the hearing officer versus the constituent board?
Yes. So and looking at the data, we had a total of twenty-seven appeals district wide last year. Of the twenty-seven appeals, there were only four that came from the DOS level daytime hearing. So but again, that would be equated to the fact that we are very limited in what we can assign at a hearing. So those students walk away with either return to school, probation, placement in alternative program. Maybe they received community service, but that was very limited to what we could do during that daytime hearing. Were there students who needed additional consequences or additional supports? Yes, but with the limitation of what we were applying during that daytime hearing, those are the students that we will see violate immediately and would go before the constituent board. So a lot of our constituent board hearings were probation violations because those students had already appeared before us for DOS hearings and we knew that they needed something different than what we were applying.
Anything else, Dr. Temple?
I'm done.
Ms. Palmer?
I have concerns around the due process issues. You are proposing that we a, as Mr. Kelly was pointing out, we are adding a layer of bureaucracy as opposed to a constitutional appearing before an elected body politic, which is similar in an adult world. When, when, when you, you go before a jury of your. which is similar in an adult world, when you go before a jury of your peers. And you are basically tried, this is a trial, basically trialed with an examination of evidence brought forth before community members who are elected by the community at large to deal with our children. So I have a great concern with eliminating the separation of powers and bringing it all under the government oversight.
So this is not a separation of powers. The power still is at the constituent board level. So I want to go back and identify what I stated earlier. The constituent boards have identified which hearings will be conducted by DOS. That's not new. That's always been our process in CCSD. The first time this was done was in 2016, 2017, but it was never revamped at that point. Strong emphasis, strong support from the constituent boards about looking at which cases we actually conduct at the DOS level. For example, drug possession. In 2016, 2017, the constituent board chairs and vice chairs at that time stated that they wanted drug possession to go before DOS hearing officer or a DAP hearing officer. Times have changed. We have seen an uptick in drug cases on our campus and our constituent board chair and vice chairs have all elected to have all drug possession cases now at a constituent board level hearing. So DOS will no longer conduct hearings for drug possessions. The only way drug possession cases would come to DOS if this policy passes is if the constituent board is actually not able to meet within the timeline that's given to us for the state and conducting hearings and the constituent board elects to ask the DOS hearing officer to conduct the hearing. At this time, our response would have to be no, that we're not able to because the options that would be given to the parent at night would not be given to the parents during the day. And so when our school administrators submit a packet for the recommendation of expulsion, we're not allowed to move those packets to daytime hearing because expulsion is not on that list. Does that make sense?
It absolutely. So, but I'm gonna like shorten what you just said. You've had current sitting elected officials passing over their authority to a bureaucrat, basically. And you're wanting, you're asking us to expand that.
So I would not use the term passing over their.
Surrendering. It's a surrendering of authority.
I would say help. I would say that the constituent boards, they have their timeline, their schedule, and as you stated, that they're elected officials. So we are trying to work within a tight timeline that the state has given us for conducting hearing after a parent has been notified that their child is being recommended for expulsion. So with that in mind, if a constituent board is not able to meet or have a special call meeting within that timeline, we have two choices at this moment. We can supersede that timeline and wait until the board is able to meet. Or we can take the hearing and pass it to the DOS hearing officer. If that's not feasible, then we wait until the board is actually able to meet. When we talk about those cases that are actually outlined for daytime hearing, then our options will remain the same where we look at the probation, return to school and so forth.
I think this board definitely understands long meetings and extra meetings and all of that, but it's still a part of the duty that you're elected to. But it's, again, it goes back to current sitting constituent board members and I guess previous constituent board members that have passed their authority over to, anyway, that, I feel like we're now going in circles. So that's all I've got.
Ms. Watley, we appreciate that perspective and you sharing with us. I think what's important to note here that I think Dr. Coakley has probably been hesitant to call out is that when we have students who are out and have to wait so long for hearing, those students remain out unsupervised, sometimes.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Creating other situations and not being served either with mental health services that they need or with rehab services that they need. And in many instances, Mrs. Palmer and Mrs. Paylor have intervened because there have been situations where the district's been brought to counsel because we failed to provide a hearing in a timely way, simply because our constituent boards haven't had the capacity. So we appreciate the perspective that you bring up, but I want to make sure that the board understands that the effort of Dr. Coakley is to make sure we're serving kids in a timely way and getting them their services that they need. But certainly appreciate that perspective and don't want to overstep. And the constituent boards only want to attempt to serve families.
Understood. And if I may just kindly add that most of the boards that we would be supporting already meet once or twice a week. So these boards are meeting at the most twice a week to make sure that they get through cases. One constituent board had over 212 cases last year alone, and that was meeting twice a week. Another board had 238 cases. And another one, our smallest board meetings, not, we're not talking about smaller districts, but as far as in the hundreds, was 121 cases on last year that they had to meet on to make sure students were served.
I think the issue here is that, that we have constituent boards that have a small number of cases, but then we have constituent boards which have a lot more schools and obviously a lot more cases. So, you know, delegating some of those cases, you know, to a hearing officer might be something that almost immediately you can get services to the student, like put them in an alternative program. And maybe some of the more difficult ones remain with the constituent board, which is a panel of individuals looking at things. So I think that's one of the issues here because I know when I was a principal in one of the constituent districts, it was really hard to get my cases before the board because they were just, they were overloaded with the number of cases they were trying to, you know, do. I mean, these people are, the constituent board members are working hard with two and three meetings a week, you know, week after week. And I think they only get $25 or something like that. So you know, we're, so I think we've tried to come up with, with a way to help the students get the services as quickly as they can. And maybe the constituent boards then are deciding which cases they need, they want to weigh in on with having a group of individuals. So I don't know. I think even that I'd be more comfortable with a hearing panel versus just a hearing officer, getting a different perspective on what the situation is. Cause I know as we have dealt as board members with appeals, it's often been really helpful for us to come at it with different perspectives.
It is. Thank you, Dr. Temple. Madam Chair, did you have any, sorry, Ms. McKinney? Did you have anything to add, Ms. Bailey?
I agree with Ms. Temple about the hearing panel versus one person.
Ms. Watley, anything to add to the discussion?
I think you've answered pretty much all my questions. I'm just going to make sure we're clear. Because it appeared, I was worried when I read it. We are the only district that has constituent boards. So when you read the law, it's very clear what the constituent board is supposed to do. But it appears that over the years, the constituent board has not had a problem with delegating some of its problems. I went to my constituent board guru, Mr. Calhoun, and talked to him for a long time about this issue. And I've heard exactly what you said, what he said. The constituent boards in some districts are just so overwhelmed. So my, just so we're clear, whatever happens at one of these hearings, a student has the right to appeal to the constituent board. And then so we're just, while we're adding another level, my only concern is that some of the parents or whatever may not understand what happens at that school level, which is why I agree that you need a panel. Because they know what happens at a constituent board. You know, they know all the rights. So but it's just the appellate right that the student has that right to appeal to the constituent board. And as really the only question I have is, doesn't that affect the timeline? What? When you say the timeline, what are we actually talking about? What has to be done by the state?
The state only allows us 15 days from the date that the parent has been notified.
To do what?
To conduct the hearing.
Oh, to conduct the hearing. 15 days. Okay. The initial. Just the initial hearing. So that's it. Okay.
And then after that, they have 10 days to appeal from the date of the decision. And that appeal goes to the constituent board if it's a DOS level hearing. Or it comes to the board of trustees if it's a constituent board. So that's not adding a layer. That's already the process for us.
There's no further timelines that have to be complied other than those two timelines.
That is, that is the timeline.
15 days and the 10 days for appeal. So, because if you have a decision and then the constituent board can't meet because of the caseload, but still, no, I understand.
Yes. And just to add that the language that's inside the policy is the language that's actually in the state's policy. So we, again, I'm not certain why we removed the language whenever, you know, we started with hearings. So it's not a language that, you know, I created or the members on the PDP steering committee create. This is actually putting the language back that's used at the state level.
Back when the constituent boards were in existence?
Or whenever it was decided that the expulsion piece would be removed from daytime hearing. I was not in the department whenever that decision was made.
He's showing that the dates like '06 and constituent boards were in place at '06. So obviously the language was in there when the constituent boys were created. Okay. Thank you.
So Dr. Coakley, two questions for you. I want to understand the mechanics of this. I thought I heard you correctly and then I thought I heard you say something different. So the a student discipline hearing comes, or a student discipline packet comes up, and then does the board at that moment decide if they want to hear that?
Great question. So it's already predefined on which cases they would like to hear. That's already predefined. It's already charted out on what is constituent board hearing and what's a DOS level hearing. That's also already spelled out in the PDP, the Progressive Discipline Plan. So when you look at the Progressive Discipline Plan, if it says, I prefer to DOS for a hearing, that's a daytime hearing. If it says referral for expulsion, that is a nighttime hearing. Okay. And so, but the constituent board chairs, they already have it mapped out on which hearings are theirs and which ones would belong to the DOS level hearing. However, if the constituent board receives a packet and they review the packet and they know they're not going to be able to meet in a timeline, or they would like to delegate that to a hearing officer, which is in their right to do, then we would be able to conduct the hearing if the policy is amended. If the policy is not amended, we would not be able to conduct that hearing.
So the last, the second question that I have for you then is, does each constituent board? Well, let me back up. So the motive, the reason I'm hesitant with this is basically what Ms. Watley said, we, as part of the democratic process, the constituent boards are elected. And so to remove, delegate, which I think the term you're looking for is delegate, that authority to a non-elected individual makes me nervous. I just, on a principle, that makes me nervous. I understand it's already happening at some. So the question then is, when that constituent board hands off a case type, whatever, to a hearing officer, does that constituent board get to put restraints around that hearing officer? Here's my, here's what I want to make sure we're avoiding. In District Five, if you bring drugs to school, the hearing officer can expel you. In District Four, if you bring drugs to school, the hearing officer can only suspend you. Because then we've got this really out of balance discipline thing across the district.
Which is my concern as well.
That is a great question. So we actually select what the options are at DOS and we provide those options to the constituent board, the same way that you all receive the appeal options. So the options that you all see in appeal, those options have already been selected from DOS based on that student's background, whether it's a gen ed or IEP student. So those options cannot be altered by any constituent board. So the options remain the same, even if it was going to go to the constituent board, or it would be actually during that DOS daytime hearing.
I must not have asked my question correctly. I'm sorry. A hearing officer, if this is approved, can a, can a hearing officer have the authority to suspend in District Three, but only, or expel in District Three, but only suspend in District Four?
No.
Okay.
The options would be the same. So if it's a drug possession case, then it's a gen ed student, your option would be return to school, return to school on board probation. In lieu of expulsion, place the student at Turner Point Academy for 30 or 45 days. In lieu of expulsion, place the student at Liberty Hill Academy or Daniel Jenkins Academy. In lieu of expulsion, temporary virtual placement, and they can identify the time period. In lieu of expulsion, the student, if it's a special ed, then we refer the student back to the IEP team for placement consideration. And then the other option would be expulsion from CCSD for the remainder of the semester, expulsion from CCSD for the remainder of the school year. So those are your, those are your generic option that all boards receive. And if it's, again, if it's a gen ed, you get all the options that I just named out, except for refer back to the IEP team. If it's a special ed student, you get the return to school board probation or refer the student to the IEP team for placement consideration or expulsion with services. Because that's the law. That's what we have to provide for our special ed scholars.
Okay. I'm going to repeat back to you what I think I heard, just to make sure I'm clear on this. All of those options are available to all of the hearing officers and all of the constituent boards?
Absolutely. And that is how we, that's how we operate in CCSD. There is no deciding for this constituent board, they're only going to receive these options for these type of children. The options are the same across our board. So again, just a little bit of history, the Progressive Discipline Plan. This is nothing that, you know, we went out to create. This was actually mandated of us from 2016, 2017, when we went under a review similar to what you heard Ms. Rush talk about with the Department of Justice. So making sure that we are providing equity and fairness across the district regardless of where that line is drawn for students.
I have one, one final. I see here it says the constituent board may delegate its authority to initially hear the student's discipline case to a hearing panel or a hearing officer. So the decision is made at the constituent board level.
Yes. So if it's, we'll take the drug possession case again. That is already identified to be completed at the constituent board level. But if the constituent board, let's just say it's D four, they're already backed up in cases. Normally they're two weeks scheduled out for cases. So this student may be waiting four weeks before they can have their schedule hearing. So if the D four constituent board says, we need these packets to be moved to DOS so the hearings can be conducted, then we would be able to conduct those hearings if this policy was to move through. If it's not moved through, then those students would remain either in that temporary virtual placement that we piloted last year, or they remain out of school until that hearing has been conducted.
But who's going to decide if it's going to be a hearing? I guess for me, I don't like the one person. So who's going to decide if it's a hearing panel or just an hearing officer?
So to do a hearing panel, we would need to actually solicit support from outside individuals. We tried that with the DAP hearings on last year, our alcohol drug alternative program for teens where we use mental health. We had social workers, DSS and so forth on that panel. But it was very inconsistent with the attendance of the individuals. So maybe some members might have shown up on a weekly basis, but then there were other members where we were down to two or three for the hearing panel. Again, looking at what our neighboring districts and what districts across the state is doing, they use one hearing officer for that support. May not be in the best interest of some cases where you have a complicated case, which is why we put those safeguards in place to say we have up to 10 days to actually deliver a decision from a hearing. So that hearing officer would not make a decision on that case at that moment. The video, the audio recording, the student packets and so forth would move to a hearing panel to review like you all do on the appeal and a decision would be made at that point.
I share your concern, Darlene. I don't like it.
I'm very concerned about it too.
As I recall, when I dealt with this and had issues, the hearing panel was not a lot of people outside the district. It was, could have been a principal, assistant principal, a guidance counselor from somebody outside of the school where the. Where the case was coming forward. So, and I think it was like a three-person panel and it had that kind of diversity. And I, I guess what happened was people signed up or they were delegated to know that in such and such a week. Um, you're going to be on a hearing panel and you, that was just part of your job description. So that seemed, that seemed good because you had people who were not associated with the school or knew the student. But could look at the student's situation to make a decision.
I would love to operate, um, as a hearing panel. It does require us to remove administrators from the building or individuals from their day-to-day job performance. So I think that's something we would need to look into. Um, there is one district right now, uh, within South Carolina who actually have APs sign up to service hearing officers. And it rotates on a calendar basis. So the individual shows up, conducts the hearings and then, uh, move back into their school. So it's still a one individual, um, you know, individual case. But as far as looking at a hearing panel, if we can definitely have the consistency and who's attending. On, on a given week, a DOS here, we may conduct twenty daytime hearings in a week. So we're asking somebody to show up twenty times in a week. So on, on one day, um, I may conduct eight hearings. And one day on top of continuing with the work that I need to get done throughout the day. So it is asking a lot for one individual. That's why we're devoting this upcoming year to a hearing officer. Fully just conducting those hearings and moving it through with an additional staff member certified administrator there as consult. With a third certified administrator on staff who will also serve. So if it needs to move to a hearing panel, we will have enough certified administrators on staff along with non-certified administrators. But again, we're talking anywhere between eight to ten hearings a day.
So Dr. Coakley, would it, is this something that we should be maybe having a state-level discussion about? Eliminating the constituent boards and just moving towards hearing officers?
I love my constituent board. No, 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 no. So that is not my recommendation to you all. My recommendation is we have constituent boards who have the heart for children. They want to make sure that the scholars are receiving everything possible. And all they're asking for is a little bit of help. And we're also asking that we level the playing field when it comes down to what we apply for student consequences. One example would be just a call today. We had a parent who stated, is this a daytime hearing or a nighttime hearing? I said, it's a daytime here. The parent comment to me was, oh, we're good because you guys don't expel during the daytime. So we do have our consistent offenders who come through during the daytime and they understand what we put on ourselves as limitations. For the district, not what the state has placed as limitations, but we, what, what we have done as a district and stating what those, um, options would be. If we're uncomfortable with moving forward with this policy change or navigating it. Then we talk about what do we do to support our constituent boards? Because again.
That was my next.
The ones, yeah, the ones who are conducting hearings, they're already doing it twice a week.
So.
For the most part.
I'd like to make a motion then. I move that we accept the policy amendment as brought forward by Dr. Coakley with one minor tweak. That the, we remove the phrase hearing officer. And say hearing panel that must have at least three. And the reason I say that is because this is a permissive policy, not a requirement policy. We are saying constituent boards may. So the constituent boards can, can work with their particular principals, administrators. They can, they can work out the details of how they want that to do, how they want, what they want that to look like with the timing and all that stuff. We're saying you may, if you want. And what that does is that alleviates the daytime elimination, the daytime problem, the, the restraints, the handcuffs that are on the daytime officers. As they're dealing with it.
I'd also like to, um, ask Dr. Coakley about the inclusion of the guidance counselors in the process.
So, so just procedural real quick. There's a motion on the floor.
Right.
Hasn't been seconded yet.
Just throwing that out there. I'll second it.
There you go.
So would you please, so you're wanting to change that first sentence?
The first sentence to strike the phrase hearing officer.
Make it hearing panel.
Hearing panel and then put language in there that meet, that defines a hearing panel to be three people. Policy not the motion, but. The, the both, yeah, the motion is to accept.
What happened before.
It's, it's still perfectly fine. I, I mean, I'm sorry. Ms. Palmer, would you like to, uh, speak to that?
I believe you can make an amendment right now and then it has to be read, obviously, at the board meeting.
Right. So the motion is to accept the amendment as brought forward. I'm sorry, accept the, the policy amendment. As presented by Dr. Coakley. With the exception of the phrase hearing officer. And to define a hearing panel as three people. This, this still isn't one reading though.
That's what this is all about.
Aren't we just saying like, um, hearing panel of three members? And then just strike hearing officer out of the policy?
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
But for clarity, this still requires two readings, so the first is coming up, not tonight. And then again, a month later. So there's still plenty of time for feedback and, and Dr. Coakley, I would, I would love to hear from the constituent. On this topic.
Absolutely.
The only thing is I would just submit, as I mentioned earlier, that these are current sitting. Board members, um. That, that may be their, a personal opinion in that moment. Um, whereas we're talking about an existing governing structure. Anyway, I, I, I think we've been in the weeds enough. The, and, and Ms. Palmer's also, um, Dr. Coakley, she's sending you something else because there's more to it than that. There are other policies involved.
Okay. Are we ready for the question?
Ms. Trudy, did you get?
Yes, ma'am.
And I seconded.
Would you mind just reading it back as you have it?
Right.
Uh, the last phrase you said add, change that to define. And you got it.
Say that one more time for me, Mr. Kelly, I apologize.
She said add the phrase hearing panel, but you already have it in there. So we're defining hearing panel as three people.
Yes.
Or three members or whatever.
Ms. McKinney, did you have?
I have a question out of the motions. It has been made and seconded.
It has been.
It has.
Go right ahead.
Oh, so my question is for Dr. Coakley, is that change doable? Is it doable to have a hearing panel of three? And not have a hearing officer?
So I'm a positive thinker.
Does that expedite the issue or not, which I know is part of the?
It will make it difficult because we are again, or we will have to pull individuals from their day-to-day work. We may not be able to conduct as many of the hearings that we normally would conduct throughout the week. But we will do our best to make that work.
And, and to be clear, this is permissive. So it's the, the constituents may.
Eliminating the hearing officer, and that's what I wanted to say.
I think Ms. McKinney raises a, a really good question. And I think an important stakeholder group from which we'll need to get feedback is principals. Because I do think we're gonna get some. We're gonna get some, uh, pushback from principals on, on this and the level of support they're used to from their APs. In the day, and this is not funded in the budget if we were needed to go outside of utilizing APs during the day to fund extra officers. So I, I think that between now and the board meeting, we will need to do some engagement with principals. Um, because this adds a duty to assist the principals that they don't currently have.
Well, then I have a, Dr. Coakley, um, should we maybe hold off on taking a vote on this until, given the, all of the feedback?
So we, um, have been waiting for a while to come before you all, um, already on this. We've met with principals, APs, um, constituent boards. I would ask that the next meeting is August twenty eighth, twenty. I think we have enough time to vet this with our principals. Um, we have a lot of anxious people waiting to hear what the results, um, you all are going to present. Again, a hundred seventy-five participants, over three hundred suggestions, nine meetings. So I would like to go back to them, um, with the outcomes of tonight, get, gather further feedback. I'll make sure it's in writing that way you all will have some more information.
But I thought you said you were hiring, um, hearing officers. So the panel doesn't necessarily have to be staff. Can it be three hearing officers?
Right, so when, when we talk about the hearing officers, there's one placement coordinator, we have the certified individuals. So when I talked about us conducting twenty hearings throughout the week, those are with multiple people conducting those hearings, not one individual. Um, so myself, another colleague, we would conduct all of those hearings throughout the week to make sure that it's done in a timely manner. If we take all three and place them on one panel, then that's less hearings we will be able to conduct throughout the week.
And principals are already frustrated at the, the, the amount of time. Dr. Coakley is Wonder Woman, as you can tell. She's very efficient, highly effective at the work and communication. But there's only so much that she can do. Principals are already frustrated. At the amount of time it takes to get a hearing scheduled in order, and so are families, to provide, um, services to, to students and, and their families. So, um, thank you.
But Ms. Higgins, I, I think it's important to note that the, the, at least as I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues here, but I.
Sure.
Uh, it seems like we all have the same desire to protect. The, the students from something that, that may be improper or unfair. So that, that, at least that's my motivation behind wanting more than a single person.
We, we completely respect that. So what we want to do is just, we'll take the next two weeks, engage with principals. And assist the principals and, and then report back to you when we, when we come back to the board.
And maybe think broadly as to who could be on these panels, not just principals or assistant principals. It might be guidance, it might be a mental health, um, person, you know, just anyone who understands. Um, children and, and their needs and, and can relate to families. Cause I mean, that's one of the reasons I love the constituent boards is because I see a group of individuals that really care about the students. And they're really working on restitution and restorative practices to get that student back, um, into school. Um, they put them on probation, they check with them periodically. So, um, you know, that they're overworked is, is troubling. But I think what we're talking about is, you know, at least a group of individuals who are. Listening to the situation and coming from slightly different perspectives. As to what might be in the best interest of that student. And the sooner we can get more restorative justice.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and.
We can cut the expulsion.
I'm gonna go ahead and call for the motion, call for the question.
Okay, please.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, Ms. Trudy, you, you have it. Okay. Okay, so the motion passes.
You broke our unanimous streak. Thought we were gonna have a good night. Okay, um, item five D. Uh, this is the, uh, Progressive Discipline. Policy. I hope everyone got a chance to read it. I liked some of the language in here. I like the fact that we're including that our discipline and, um. And our policies apply to the bus stop and other shared transportation. I think that's a wonderful thing. Um, that we certainly should be, um, that we should include in a policy like this. Uh, however, I'm not a fan of the progressive discipline as a, um. As a principal, uh, and so I don't plan to, uh, to support this, but I thought it was appropriate. To bring it forward to the board for discussion as Dr. Coakley has put so much work into it. So with that, I'll just open it up if anyone has questions or conversation.
Um, are you gonna go down and call?
I. If there's nothing to be said, I don't know. Is anyone, uh, Dr. Temple, do you have anything to say?
No, I mean, I. I understand the Progressive Discipline Plan and I think it gives our schools something to work on. I am hopeful always that we can reduce our suspensions and expulsions of students. Because we're doing other things that improve school climate and, um, student behavior. But it, it's a tool that, that we need to use at this point in time.
Ms. Roberson, do you have anything to add?
And I struggle with this one as well, um. Again, due process, um. Things that happen in a community that comes into the school, um. I get it, um, but I'm just concerned about, um. The fairness. Um, across the district. Um, you know, on one side, students can drive on campus with guns and they have an excuse that they hunt. So that's why weapons are in their cars, but then on another side, um, they don't get that kind of, um. Um, exception. So, uh, I just think that's, this is concerning to me that something in one community. Could spill over into school, but something in another community may not. So how do we monitor that for fairness? Um, if we are looking at, um, doing something like this, that if you do something at home, then now it's going to follow you at school. And then I wonder, um, what kind of input did you get when you decided to update this policy? Was it a lot of input from police departments?
Thank you. That's a really good question. So this policy revision actually follows the same, uh, first that we just did. Along with the nine PDP steering committees, but I need to also take it back just a little bit more. On November first, two thousand twenty-two, I attended a statewide, um, update training on hot topics for school law. And this was the policy change that came out of this, where it talked about behaviors that happen off-campus. If they impact the well-being of students and safety at our schools, we are required to address those concerns. Uh, when we look at students who are being cyberbullied, uh, bullied across social media chats and so forth, that's what this policy covers. Um, students who are being threatened outside of the school environment, or they're targeted for whatever particular reasons. You know, we are not allowed to say, well, it happened off-school campus, especially if our scholars are not coming to school. And it's because of fear of what's going to happen within the school, uh, day. So they gave us several policies that I shared with, uh, general counsel after that meeting. That talked about the changes that we need to make, to make sure that we were aligned to our, um, changes within the district. So we have been utilizing discipline hearings if incidents happen. For instance, at a Wells Fargo where the groups might have waited until they got off the bus, walked across to a different area and that's where they fought it. But the incident actually began at the school level. Or there's evidence that the school administrator had already tried to provide some restorative practice for the student, told the students not to commit, um, you know, any violations. While at school and they may have waited, but again, the big social media, um, issue. So this policy revision is actually being directed from the changes that we do need to implement. Um, as a district for addressing behaviors that happen off-campus when it impacts the well-being and safety of our schools. um, as a district for addressing behaviors that happen off campus when it impacts the well-being and safety of our schools. Um, it also went through the various PDP steering committees, the constituent board chairs, uh, general counsel, parent meeting, parents steering committee, student steering committee, all that took place within this room uh, from February through April of this year.
Dr. Cogly, um, in those meetings, if you can recall, how many, um, parents that looked like me participated?
So we actually went out, Ms. Roberson, and made sure that our school administrators either brought parents into the building, students into the building, and we have, um, videos, pictures, and so forth, because I was very impressed with that turnout uh, for all of the, the committee meetings. And I can tell you that we were well represented in all meetings.
I think she means how many beautiful ladies were in the room.
Yeah. That's exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, yes. The levers were in the room. Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Okay. Ms. Roberson, anything further? Ms. Watley?
I share the same concerns, but, um, I, I, I feel this is, um, well-intended, but, um, more a matter for law enforcement. It's an overreach.
Ms. McKinney?
Nothing new.
Ms. Bailey?
I feel like this is an overreach. I think that if it wasn't done on, then it, it's kind of like, it's kind of like double jeopardy for our kids. And you wanna penalize them for something that happened off campus that might not have had anything to do with school-related activities. So I, I don't, I don't think that's okay.
May I clarify? So we're not talking about if a student is in their home, um, and let's just say they are, and their parents got into an argument and the parent was, um, hit. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about behaviors where, um, I want to go back to the social media, because that's a really big one. If a student is threatened, if a student is intimidated, because in, in the state of South Carolina, it would be intimidation if it's towards a student. If a student actually sends a Snapchat threat towards a teacher from their home, those would be incidents that we can address. If a, um, student, if a group of students assaulted another student, um, after getting off the bus at a Wells Fargo bank and said they were waiting till the Wells Fargo bank to assault the student, those are incidents that we are stating we would address. If a student, um, commits a crime off campus, and if it doesn't fall under the seven hundred list that's been outlined by the State Department, we are not allowed to address. And law enforcement does not have any authority over the hearings that we conduct on our school campus if it does not meet the stipulations of a seven hundred, which is seven zero zero off-campus criminal activity. So these incidents are incidents that directly impact the well-being of students or our school. When we say school, we're talking about the adults or the building. If a student sends a threat across social media that don't show up at the school on X, Y, Z date because we're gonna do something about it, regardless of where that student sent the threat, because it impacted the well-being of the school, we would address it.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying, because I've actually seen that where kids were on the school bus and they didn't touch them until they got down the street and then, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's assault, which is under South Carolina criminal, and cybercrimes are too.
Right, but assault under the State Department of Education off-campus would not warrant a hearing under a seven hundred incident.
Right. I know, I understand that, but law enforcement would certainly be dealing with somebody who assaulted another person.
Correct, but it still would not come to the school level.
Right.
Even if law enforcement dealt with it, without us saying that we would address and issues that impact the well-being of students and the school. Because as what Ms. Bailey just described, they had intent and they had a plan.
Right, we understand.
So Dr. Cogly, if, if I may, I'd like, Mrs. Palmer, would you clarify for all of us if, if the Supreme Court law that allows?
The regulation is off-campus speech. So like the regulation of speech is somewhat different than the regulation of front-of-day speech. Thank you, Ms. Watley. Um, it's been made very clear time and again that speech, so cyberbullying, social media threats, that sort of thing absolutely can be regulated occurring off-campus if it materially affects the operation of the school. This, and my computer, of course, is back by right now, but a separate issue is our state law that allows a student to be disciplined when the presence of that student is determined to be detrimental to the, to the, or not in the best interest of the school. So I can see where off-campus behavior outside of speech could potentially be regulated. And that's where you've got to rely on the discretion of your constituent boards and then ultimately y'all to determine whether or not whatever it is that's being punished affected the operations of the school or was not in the best interest of the school.
So I would caution the board to not allow staff and principals the discretion to do just what Ms. Palmer just suggested, if I might be so bold, and I apologize for that in advance. We won't specifically mention details of a recent case that I think four of you on the dais contacted us about in the last few weeks. That incident occurred during the summer. However, had it occurred during the school year, it occurred off-campus. If our principals weren't allowed to look at that behavior and consider the implication of that behavior to the school environment on school grounds, it could have a detrimental impact to, to schools, to students and to families. So we don't regularly discipline students for off-campus misconduct because we have to be very clear, like Mrs. Palmer just suggested, that it impacts and we're not taking away their, their rights. But to, to take away the ability of principals to do what principals have been doing in unique situations like just occurred, had it happened during the school year, could be detrimental to children and to schools.
So you just used the phrase takeaway, though. This is adding to our policy. We're not removing anything. So if, if it's currently happening, this wouldn't stop it from continuing?
So, in complete transparency, it is currently happening, and Dr. Cogly is attempting to shore up and clarify the policy to officially authorize that. It is officially happening in our schools because particularly, um, Mr. Kelly, thank you for the question. With the addition of all the social media outlets, students have Snapchat. Um, it has become particularly disruptive to school environments, particularly the bullying pieces of it. And we, we're constantly having to intervene at the school level because it trickles over. Like Ms. Roberson said, you can't help sometimes that things from the community trickle over to the school environment. So it is, Mr. Kelly, currently happening. And Dr. Cogly's attempt to bring it to the board is to clarify the policy for the community at large and to be very transparent with parents, particularly that schools do have the right. And that's a right afforded, as Ms. Palmer suggested, through regulation.
Uh, Ms. Waters, do you have anything to add? Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah, I, I have a hard time. I mean, I understand in the Supreme Court case on a First Amendment right with cyberbullying. I get that, but this is very overbroad. I, I think it's just.
I, I certainly respect where you are, Mr. Grabowski.
Off-campus incidents, I mean, all off-campus incidents. When the presence, I mean, that's why we have police force. The incident that you referred to, I mean, most police forces are beefing up on, you know, eh, any action to where there's bullying or an assault, battery, whatever. But I'm having, I mean, the Supreme Court went after the First Amendment, but it's, it's, I did go after due process or search and seizure, I mean.
Sure, but you noticed that the revisions that Dr. Cogly has here is.
We have the, I think we have the law in place that handles the cyber. I think we're moving forward on that, but I, I just.
So this, this is very specific.
The district to an awful lot of exposure.
Can we call for the question?
I'm sorry, um, if I could just, Mr. Grabowski said something really important. So I, I don't want us to get stuck on a social media focus on that at bus stop as well. Um, without going into a whole lot of details, we had a major incident happen in our district that we stood very firm on this past school year that occurred at the bus stop. And it went through its natural procedures, uh, of hearings. And as high up as it got, Charleston County School District came on top because we were following the policies and procedures that the state outlined for what we address, um, around student discipline. It was because of that state regulation of addressing incidents, uh, of that high nature that allowed us to proceed, but we don't have it written inside our policies. But we were able to stand on, stand firm on it because of what the state expected for us to do within their regulations. So I just want to point that out there. That would have been before you all, um, came to the board where we had that major incident, uh, to occur. Um, and this was not something really light. So the changes around at the bus stop or any other mode of transportation, uh, and so forth is again, when it impacts that well-being. And we can talk more, uh, about those incidents if you like. I want to make sure I protect the identity and, and what occurred with our students.
Good evening, brother.
So as, as I understand you, the only, the code and conduct and progressive discipline are effective under the following circumstances. It's only these circumstances that are limited. I mean, that we're referring to, right?
So where you see in red is what we would be adding, and the others already exist. The term progressive discipline plan was a mandate that was given to us under our, um, Office of Civil Rights review back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, where we need to put a plan in place that would adhere to equity and fairness across the board. So this is more so the terms that you see progressive discipline plan being added is more aligned to a PDP regardless if it's the PDP that we have now or if we change it. It just shows that there's a progression of how we apply discipline within the district across all schools.
Maybe what we're struggling with here is to include off-campus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I just, yeah, I just have, I mean,
I, I gotta, I don't know this, and I, I guess it's really just a legal opinion on this, but somehow I seem to think the progressive discipline plan is there's a split upon the appellate districts. This is not uniform throughout the United States. And if there's a split between the appellate districts on this, and I think I would ask counsel to check on this, then it's going up to the Supreme Court at some point. I don't think this is universally accepted. But I don't know. I really don't know. I understand where you're going. Hey. It's a tough one.
And my comments I, I made earlier, but the, the, the biggest hurdle that I have is the, 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 the proper term, overbroad phrase of whenever the presence of a student is detrimental to the best interest of the school. Uh, that, that can be interpreted so many different ways, uh, and I, and I, it makes me nervous. But that the application of that may not, it, it's overly subjective. And so by being excessively subjective, I cannot imagine that being fairly applied across all of our students.
So what, what I can do is take this back because I did have this review by legal um, and look at those terms and make sure that anything that we have on here, it does align to what the state regulations and expectations are for those court cases that we, um, seen across the state. So that would help. I definitely am willing to take this back to legal and look at the language that's being used to see if there are any changes.
Okay, so I'm.
So we can move this on.
Well, I.
I'm sorry. Is it one of the options? We could move this on for the second reading and then have them back it up at first reading? I mean, at the first reading?
Well, I, 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 you can. I was gonna make a motion just to ask Dr. Cogly to make the amendments as discussed and, uh, and bring it back to Cal next month. Do you have something else to add, uh?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think where we're hung up is on that, in that second paragraph to include off-campus incidents when the presence. I think it's that sentence that's troublesome because when you look at the bullets below, that's very clear that those are incidents that relate to the school. So maybe we just don't need that sentence because we have those bullets below that, um, define what the issues are, where, where the situation applies on the school campus.
Yeah, I, I think so. And, and Dr. Cogly, it's a, a closing point. I would, I would ask that, um, perhaps you and I could get together sometime in, in the coming month and put together a cyberbully, bullying policy that could augment this as well.
So Ms. Lisa Allison's office actually is rolling out the bullying protocol. Um, so Lisa Allison from Steel, so I definitely can connect us all together.
Yes, I, I'd like, also, Dr. Cogly would like to be involved in that.
Absolutely.
So with that, I move that we, uh, send this policy revision back to committee.
A second. He's making.
I did. Yeah, I did.
Is that worded correct? Uh, well? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Going forward, other business, we will determine the items going to, um, potential consent for the regular board meeting. I believe that, um, three D, uh, five B. All of those were unanimous? Okay. So then, um, the motion is to move, you said three A, three D, five A, and five B to potential consent? Moved by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Grabowski.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. And let's see, closing items, um, we have the upcoming, um, regular scheduled board meeting on August twenty-eighth at five fifteen. And with that, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kelly, Mr. Grabowski, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. McKinney, second. Okay.